Executive session pursuant to master no law C thirty A section twenty one A seven to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law specifically master no law C two fourteen section one B Massachusetts Student Record Law Mass General Law C seventy one section thirty four D Massachusetts Student six oh three C M R twenty three at sequencia and Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act for a buck twenty USC section one two three two G and thirty four CFR regarding student regarding student transfer request and executive session pursuant to master no law see chapter thirty A section twenty one A three to discuss strategy with respect to litigation including the town of Hamden at all versus Hamden Wolverhampton Regional School District at all if an open meeting may have the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Um, we'll call it. Mark Phil.
Hi.
Chair.
Hi.
Patrick.
Hi.
Lisa.
Hi.
Sean.
Hi.
Laura.
I.
Myself I. We will adjourn.
Oh, we're returning to executive session who wants to send it. So we just need folks to vacate the library.
So we're gonna, we're gonna go.
Okay.
We're gonna head into the computer lab and able to stay exactly where we are. We'll be back. This is Charlotte.
So are we leaving this here?
So we, we are leaving for executive session. We are moving over into that call on a computer lab. We will come back and return and when we return, we'll be back to our school committee meeting. We're doing executive session before our meeting instead of after me.
Yeah. So we're out of executive session, we're out of executive session calling back to order. And so now we will be well, we started the public comment section of this meeting. So the superintendent is going to be making a statement.
So good evening and thank you for being here tonight. I know there are many people here tonight to give public comment and we're seeing the list that as people have either signed up electronically and the people that have signed up at the front. We have it up front. So if there's any additional people, please let us know. I'd just like to give some feedback and thought on one topic that I have seen many people commenting on and and one of them is the critical race theory and that's a conversation that's been happening not only in our school district, but many others. Last week I attended a conference with superintendents from across the state and this was certainly a topic of discussion that was happening. Like I said, not only across our community, not across our state, but across the entire nation. I want to refer to a piece of literature and research at the M A F C, which is the Massachusetts Association of School Committees has given to the school committee members that that they they posted. And I have given it also to a to the school committee last night to them as well too. I truly believe that they did a thorough job in presenting this information. I refer to the document that's right there on the screen as we, as we, as we speak. I apologize for what I'm about to read, but in terms of having reading it to you because it is listed right there as well. But it's it's titled understanding the difference between critical race theory and education equity. And first, let's consider what critical race theory is and what is not. What it is, critical race theory is a framework and our analytical tool primarily used in university level courses originating in nineteen seventies, critical race theory was first used as a way to help law students think critically about the impact of historical and present day racism on the legal system. In the nineteen nineties, some colleges of education also started incorporating critical race theory into their coursework to help aspiring school administrators and teachers better understand inequities in the context of education. I had a when we were away last week for a couple of days at the conference for superintendents, we had a Harvard professor who teaches at the graduate level that came and spoke to, came to speak to all the superintendents. And one of the things that she was done is that she's barely beginning at this level now to start talking about critical race theory. What it isn't, critical race theory is not part of our social space curriculum and has never been part of the socialist curriculum framework in Massachusetts. Massachusetts has a comprehensive curriculum framework for social studies has been widely praised for its breadth and balance. Anyone can access the frameworks at the website of the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Second Education. Of course, teaching social studies and history will times require discussions about historical instances of racism or scenarios where race was an important factor. This insurance often prompts student questions and requests for additional discussion on how some elements of history continue to play out in our communities. Massachusetts teachers, as do their colleagues across the country, have experience and expertise in managing these conversations. Unlike critical race theory, which is again a tool primarily used in institutes of higher education, educational equity is a K to twelve term referring to federal in-state policies and requirements. So just to summarize, critical race theory is not being taught in any of our schools of the Hamden Wolverhampton Regional School District. Lastly, I know that a conversation will be happening tonight, but I'm looking over the public comment about an equity audit. We as a school district are committed to equity, equity for all of our children. It doesn't matter who they are, where they come from, the color of their skin, or the educational abilities they come with. It is our job as educators in the Hamden Wolverhampton Regional School District to take our students as they come to us, no matter what grade, and provide them all they need to succeed and be successful. Inclusion and belonging to our community will lead to equity. Inclusion will lead to excellence. We need and want excellence in our classroom for each and every one of our students. This is a goal that we as educators are constantly striving to succeed. I'd like to leave you with a quote from Vincent Body. The quote goes like this. I firmly believe that any man's finest power, the greatest fulfillment of all that he holds dear, is the moment when he has worked his heart out in a good cause and lies exhausted on the field of battle victorious. Please know that we will never exhaust trying to provide an equitable education for our children in the Hamden Wolverhampton Regional School. Thank you.
So now we need to begin with public comment. So we will call on on those that have signed up for public comment. We do have some people that had sent in letters that asked that they be read aloud during this meeting for the record. Then we will move to the people that have signed up online and then those that have signed up on this report. So we do ask that when you're called that each person state their name, their address, and then sit at the designated table, just right in front, um, and keep your and speak for up to five minutes. Um, Sean Kennedy will be keeping time.
So what I'm gonna do, I'm the secretary, so I was assigned this. So when you come up, you start talking, I'll hit the timer. At four minutes, I'll just raise my hand, just so you know it's four minutes because I want to do what's least intrusive to you and I don't want to distract you too much. At four minutes and thirty seconds, I'll just say four minutes and thirty seconds and then in five minutes, I'll say your time is done. Okay? Is that okay with everybody?
Are we following more of a town meeting policy where it's, I think, three or three or five on five on each side or are we having everybody wants to speak? Everyone wants to speak.
I apologize if I butchered the last name.
Doing alphabet log.
I have Tamara Zayas.
Oh, maybe not. Sorry. It's all good.
Okay, that's not the one I'm sharing.
Okay. I can wait.
So these are public comments for people who are not able to attend tonight, but submitted that and they wanted on the record. So we're just gonna have them read to you and then you're gonna see a copy of it behind you as well.
Do the one that starts with a B?
Yes.
I can do that one. Okay.
If I can say, Kate, are you gonna, all the letters that we got, um, you know, this for the past couple of weeks, are those?
Excuse me. I have a problem here. Can you please address us this way? We are beginning your interview.
No, if that happens again, just keep raising your hand and bringing it up.
There's no mic? Yes.
Test one, two, test one, two.
What I was asking is I was asking, Kate, if the people who sent emails and stuff like that, are those emails gonna be put online so people can see that? Public record, right? Katie, are you looking at me perplexed or are you agreeing?
Nobody has asked me to put those online, just in the meeting folder or like put it as a
So is that, is that coming through?
It would be part of the record.
Part of the record.
Yeah, with the minutes.
Is that coming through that?
Yeah.
I know. Some people specifically asked it to be read. Other people didn't, but they said they couldn't be here. So I thought that would give them a voice by putting it online.
So I will work with the chair. I got a few letters.
Go through the owl, but it's not as big as those speakers up there. That's the problem.
Um, so they'll be there and they will, they will be accessible. And I haven't got them all. I just have this. So I'll mind whatever I have.
Don't know.
Test one, two.
Yeah, I don't know. I went through it just a bit ago and I don't know what.
Warren, you wanted to stop and just?
Yep. And again, I apologize if I butchered the last name. It's not intentional. Um, it's from Lucy L. Breckon Nekki from Skidmore and Hamden. Dear school committee members, I am writing to support the equity audit that is to be undertaken to assess and improve excellence and equity in the Wolverhampton Hamden District School. As a resident of Hamden for the last thirteen years, I have closely followed many of the educational issues raised raised in the regional system. It is a good system which can only become more equitable for all students with a formal assessment and measure plan. I ask that you read my letter aloud during the public comment section of the next Board of Education meeting. As a former Board of Education member who has also been a facilitator of efforts to promote equity in schools in a town much like Hamden and a social science researcher for more than fifteen years, I understand the importance of getting an accurate picture of both quantitative and qualitative data in working towards educational improvement efforts. In my own work, I have done audits of vocational educational programs at the secondary level and in both community college and workforce development programs to best serve all those involved, students, teachers, and administrators. Without good data, there can be no real change. The readily available data about the region system, about the regional system, high school gives insight into some of the issues that can be addressed by an audit of policies and practices that may be promoting and hindering equity. The following are the three data points that suggest an equity audit is not only warranted, but much needed. Grade nine course passing of all grade nine students at Minnetoga High School, I'm sorry, of all grade nine students, two hundred and eighty-five at Minnetoga High School, ninety-three point seven percent, which is two hundred and sixty-seven, passed all courses. By race and ethnicity, African American black students, eighty-one point eight percent, Hispanic or Latino, eighty-five point seven percent, and multi-race, non-Hispanic or Latino students, eighty-five point seven percent were less likely to do so. Ninety-four point nine of white students passed all courses. Rates of in and out of school suspensions by racial and ethnic groups, by, by, I'm sorry, by racial and ethnic group suspensions varied greatly. Six point six percent of white students disciplined received in-school suspensions and two point six percent received out-of-school suspensions. Twenty-four point one percent of African American black students disciplined received in-school suspensions. Three point four percent received out-of-school suspensions. Twenty point three percent of Hispanic Latino students disciplined received in-school suspensions. Five point eight percent received out-of-school suspensions. The two thousand nineteen A C G R at Minnetoga overall was ninety-five percent with one point three percent of the cohort still in school. No non-graduating completers, one point three percent completing a high school equivalency and a two percent dropout rate. The data for African American black students were not available as the cohort numbered less than six. For Hispanic Latino students, the graduation rate was eighty-eight point nine percent. And for multi-race, non-Hispanic or Latino students, the graduation rate was eighty-eight point nine percent. For Asian students, the graduation rate was a hundred percent. For white students, the graduation rate was ninety-five point four percent. We cannot attribute these data points to the individual students, thinking that there is something occurring among only Latino or African American students or Asian or white students that we can point to. There are greater structural inequalities at work here. The pattern of achievement and completion demonstrated in this single year are not only the case in this system, but in one year, but in nearly all systems. It is the, it is at the local level with assessment and policy change where they are best addressed. Respectfully, Lucy Breckon.
Thank you.
I was just thinking because as you're reading it, what I'll do in one minute, I'll just hold up a one and two, just so, you know, you have an idea of where you are. Would that be helpful or? Yep. Cool.
This is from Elizabeth Swain, twenty-eight Brentwood Drive in Wolverhampton. I'm writing to show my unwavering support of the equity audit designed for our school system. I strongly support this audit and urge committee members to show support at the school committee meeting on Thursday, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. This audit must take place to align with the vision of inclusion, informed decision-making, and progress. First, Wolverhampton must be an inclusive place to live, work, and grow. The demographics of our town are changing. In the last several years, there have been waves of young families moving into our neighborhoods, all with similar goals. Families flock to Wolverhampton because of its prop, of its pristine reputation for excellence in education. There are a variety of families who call Wolverhampton home in twenty twenty-one. These families bring different cultures, experiences, and perspective to our town. They should all be welcomed, feel safe, and secure in our schools. This audit serves to protect these needs and enforce similar guidelines for our children, families, and faculty alike. This audit will secure Wolverhampton's reputation for quality education for all students. Next, taking data, taking data is a necessary endeavor in any workplace. Reliable information is needed in order to produce sound, thoughtful, and structured decisions to benefit everyone. One major purpose of this audit is to incorporate data into decision, into decision-making that will benefit our students and faculty. Strong data comes through observation from trained individuals who will use this information to build stronger, more insightful curriculum, support student body participation in multiple areas, and train faculty and staff in the ever growing realm of good teaching practices. Lastly, Wolverhampton must be on the side of progress. The world is changing. Education is dynamic and this audit reflects our allegiance to these progressive values. Our schools can't move forward without embracing change. While change is uncomfortable to many, it is always necessary to produce awareness, clarity, and growth. Being uncomfortable is necessary in order to evolve. I urge you to continue with this audit with the best interest for our students, families, and faculty at heart. Please feel free to express my sentiments at the school board meeting. Thank you. And the next one is from Tamara Zayas. I apologize for any mispronunciations. Dear school, Stony Hill Road, Wolverhampton. Dear school committee members. I'm sorry, Kate.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll keep going. Dear school committee members, my name is Tamara Zayas and I am a Wolverhampton resident and parent of two H W R S D students. I'm writing to voice my support for the proposed equity audit and would like my email read into the record of the school committee meeting on July twenty-second, twenty twenty-one. So much in our world is changing so quickly and we must keep up in every way we can. I have read many reports and articles about programs and initiatives that have helped girls be successful in school while boys have been struggling and falling behind. I worry about this for my son who is entering Minnetoga this year. My daughter has an I E P and her own struggles. Over the years, talking with so many parents in town, we all worry about our kids and both their academics and socialization. My understanding is that an equity audit gathers data and information to uncover inequities in order to target areas that need improvement. Why wouldn't we want to take advantage of that? We all have an opportunity to make sure our children are getting the best education that can be provided. It will help our district stay up to date and equal to surrounding towns. It has nothing to do with critical race theory and we need to stop allowing parents to mislabel what an audit does and how it can be used to help set up all children for success.
I'm sorry. There's a lot of people on, so I'm trying to get a mic system set up. So during the summer, there's not as many students around. So we're just trying to get that set up. So it'll be easier for everybody to get, because it's hard to get back. Yeah. Sorry.
Yeah. Nope. So now we're going to move to public comment. So I'm going to call in Renee Bracy.
Just state your name.
Renee Bracy. Renate Bracy.
I just have to speak up a little so people know that.
Oh, don't worry. I'm loud enough.
Thank you.
Good evening. As you know, my name is Renee Bracy. I'm a parent of a preschooler at Mile Tree and a second grader at Stony Hill. I also have, also am a child and family therapist in town. I must say I'm a little frustrated that instead of being able to serve our community and tuck my kids into bed, tonight I have to be here fighting for their basic rights. I'm frustrated that you all have spent a year going around and around and around over whether or not this district want, whether or not you want this district to work for all of our students or keep it just working for some. This motion is not a hard decision in my opinion. The evidence is there showing us that the district needs more help and that the community welcomes this audit. So I'm going to use my time breaking it down in terms that can be clear, hopefully for everyone in this room and everyone watching online. Here is a letter written aloud at the June twenty-seventh meeting. The school committee meeting. I'm resubmitting this letter and ask that you note that there are a hundred and ten signatures in support of the equity audit. Here is a letter that was sent to you in the summer of twenty twenty where students were alumni from Minnetoga demanded that you take action to support minority students. You'll find that it has over three hundred signatures in support of equity audits and addressing issues for our students. Here are the statistics reported to DESI by our administration regarding discipline. It shows significant racial disparities. Black and brown students are disciplined at a higher rate and consequence more severely than their white classmates. Here are the statistics reported to DESI regarding ninth grade course completion. When looking at it, you will find that the data shows that students with disabilities are passing their courses at a lower rate than their other, than their peers, indicating a need for additional services to support students, to support these students. In my effort to better understand the issues facing the black and brown community in this town, I have reviewed public records and interviewed community members. What I have found was alarming. Statistics show significant disparities. But more importantly, in listening to people's experiences within our school district, I was able to document over two hundred instances of overt racism spanning ten years in this school district. Everything from being called the N word and administration doing nothing to, to a student being accused of not writing their own paper because it was quote, "too well-written" for someone like them. If you don't think that these instances have an impact on a student, you're dead wrong. In my work, I see many students whose anxieties and stress are directly related to the lack of resources, knowledge, empathy, and understanding from school officials and classmates surrounding issues of culture and inclusion. This is just what I found in my spare time. Now imagine what an expert would be able to uncover and more importantly, what they would be able to offer in terms of a path forward. Speaking of a moving forward, districts all around us have recognized the importance of equity, diversity, and inclusion. They know that to be the best, you have to offer the best and you have to produce the best. We like to think that here in our district, we are the best, but we're not. Minnetoga doesn't rank in the top ten of high schools in our state. It doesn't even rank in the top ten for our metro, metro area. U S News and World Report has us ranked at a hundred and forty-second in the state. The districts who outrank us after reviewing it, I found that they have done either an equity audit or in the process of doing an equity audit or have put the necessary systems in place years ago. So they're only tweaking and fine tuning issues at this time. So maybe you don't like reading everything that I've brought to you today. Maybe you don't have time to look at what other districts have done or are doing so. That's or what they're doing. That's okay. What I ask though is that you look around this room and see the support for this audit. See the faces of everyone here today who took time out of their lives to come here and show you how important this is to them. We all that. I am here for my two boys because they deserve to go to a school and feel safe and secure. They deserve to be taught by people who look like them, to learn about the world according to their ancestors and not just their white European, and not just white Europeans. They deserve to have their special needs properly met by highly qualified and knowledgeable teachers and they, like their peers, deserve the very best. So vote yes to this audit. Without hesitation, yes. Yes to all of this, to yes to all students getting their needs met. Yes to all students seeking success. Yes to taking the step in bettering our school district. Vote yes to this audit. Thank you.
Thank you. With respect for everyone, please no outbursts. All right. And that wasn't necessary. Come on, we're all family here. We're all family here. You can say whatever you want to say up here.
I'm Kyle Langley. Is Kyle here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
What was that?
He's on Zoom.
Oh.
Kyle Langley?
Yes, hello. How are you?
Well, thank you.
Excellent.
You have five minutes.
Thank you. Should my camera be on or does it not matter?
Or you want to know if you should have the video on? That's up to you.
I'm more than happy to. Um, I don't know if I have access on my end of Zoom.
I have to open his camera so he can.
If it's too much of a problem, I don't mind.
Is there any way to turn the owl volume up?
Well, it's the sound.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can switch it to just the owl, but the owl speaker isn't, remember how it got really?
Are you hearing it out there? Are you hearing it above your head?
No, that's the problem. It's, that's what we're trying to deal with right now. I can switch it to just the owl, which doesn't have the greatest sound. Can we try that?
You, can you give us a test one, two, please?
Test one, two.
People hear that? Okay. Maybe move it, move it over closer to the, talk really loud.
Yeah. It's probably the best we can do for now.
All right, why don't you go ahead?
Hello, hello. Is that all right? Excellent. Well, hello, everybody. My name is Kyle Langley. I've been a resident of Hamden for basically all my life. Minnetoga class of twenty seventeen, Berkeley College of Music class of twenty twenty-one, and starting in August, graduate student at Berkeley's campus in Valencia, Spain. I wish I could have joined all of you in person tonight, but I am glad to speak and share my thoughts regarding the equity audit. Now, first off, it seems as an outsider that this equity audit and the discussions revolving around it are really dividing the district in our communities. Now, before I go off and explain the reasoning for why I do fully support and urge our committee to move forward with this audit, I must ask, why is this even brought up for debate? Can't we all agree that discrimination in any shape, size, or form are terrible things? And that success for all students should be priority number one? I mean, we're trying to make a real difference here using the future of our education in Hamden and Wolverhampton as much motivation for action. Now, I can remember learning about the greatness of the foundation of our country and our nation throughout history classes of T W B and Minnetoga. I learned about the signing of the Declaration of Independence, the Civil War, the Great Depression, and how the United States worked through it. But we didn't learn about how badly slavery was and how it divided the country. We didn't learn about the Stonewall Riots. We didn't celebrate Black History Month, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, nor did we learn about prominent events during the Civil Rights Movement. I almost forgot about my own Asian identity, by the way, and it didn't help that I was one of only a few handful of other Asian American students. Now, what I'm saying is that what we left out of our information along the way has been a lot, but I guess we did have time to learn about the white side, sorry, the right side of history. Sorry, the right side of history. Overall, there's still a fight left to be fought here, and we can tackle it by educating our young and future pupils of the district. And by studying it and how it's being run now, we can find the deeply rooted biases that have been taught for years and generations and change them so more voices are lifted, more perspectives are shared, and more people are included. I'm not exactly sure how this audit would be run, but I do know that there are a lot of people in this district fighting for not only accountability, but equality, equity, and justice. Maybe people can self-promote themselves, step forward and offer to run the audit. Or maybe a group of people with different ideologies can work together and research the curriculum. I think it's no denying that we all want our students to feel like they have a place of their own here in our little slice of Massachusetts. But the world is changing, and our education system should prepare them for the beautiful and diverse world that awaits them. Now, I leave you with the Intercultural Development Research Association's six goals of all equity audits. Accountability, potential for high academic achievement, equitable access and inclusion, equitable treatment, equitable opportunity to learn, and equitable resources. And these goals are to be applied to all students. So yes, all students can, or rather will, succeed. I hope we can reach a resolution and move forward with this audit, as I know I would have appreciated that when I was in Minnetoga. And I acknowledge Superintendent Ganem's opening speech about ensuring that HW RSD values equity. And I hope that this can be proven by moving forward with the audit and ensuring equality and equity for the future of all of our students. But to the school committee and everyone at the meeting tonight, virtually and in person, thank you all for your time, and as I always like to say, please spread peace and love. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next we have Tom Hidalgo.
No, he's right there.
You want me to call for me? My name's Tom Hidalgo. I'm a resident of 109 Cherry Drive in Wilbraham. I'm retired from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And I worked on equity issues for more than 20 years. I support the equity audit very enthusiastically because it's frankly, it's very good for the schools. And what's good for the schools is good for the community. An equity audit simply is a tool we can use to gather information to identify potential inequities, potential inequities in the schools to help us create a more fair, inclusive educational environment where all children are affirmed, all children are included, all children have opportunities to, opportunities they deserve to excel. That, you know, an equity audit shouldn't even be controversial, really. It shouldn't even be controversial. It's not going to hurt anyone. It's not going to take anything away from anyone. It's designed to remove barriers that prevent some students from succeeding. Pretty simple. I hope there's a unanimous vote to move forward with this tonight because that's what, that's what it should be. Thank you.
Next we have Dagmar Metchum.
Sorry about my alarm. It's my reminder to read to my child. I had a different letter, but you've already read it. So Dagmar Metchum, 425 Mountain Road. And I'm just going to read you the email that I sent earlier, just in case you didn't have a chance to read it, because I sent it kind of at the last minute. So there are two possible outcomes from an equity audit. The first outcome is that inequality and inequity are identified and recommendations are made to move in the direction of having a school district that truly serves all students. The second outcome is that we will find that HW RSD is doing everything right and inequality and inequities don't exist. If anyone believed the second outcome was possible, we wouldn't be having this conversation and this vote today. A no vote on moving forward with the equity audit to inform the strategic plan says to voters, while I accept inequity exists in our system, it is not a priority. A yes vote on the equity audit tells voters equity is a priority in our district. I personally am hopeful that the vote will be unanimous, as that would speak volumes to the public, that you as a school committee are doing exactly what you were elected to do and likely campaigned on. Make our system the absolute best for our children. A wise man who may be sitting somewhere in front of me, used as his campaign slogan, "moving forward." Well, this is what moving forward looks like. Every district around us is either already completing this audit or planning to do it. Let's not allow our school system to become irrelevant. While the superintendent will ultimately decide how to proceed, your voices can lead the way. Thank you.
Next is Jennifer. Jennifer Powell.
Hello? Russell Powell, 319 Main Street, Wilbraham. I have two kids at the middle school. When I first heard that our school district was planning to do an equity audit, I didn't think twice about it. It sounded like the right way forward is to be planning for the next 20 years. It wasn't until the audit came under question by members of our community that I started to consider what it really means. I know from my own experience that there is no way to fully understand someone unless you ask the right questions and really listen to their answers. From what I understand about an equity audit, that is what it does. We have a lot of different people in different circumstances that need to be understood to truly know if we are serving our students well. Look at me. I'm a 52-year-old white guy with no physical disabilities. I have a house, a car, a job. Most of the people I know are very much like me, too, even some of you here. If everyone was like me and my kids, I'd say everything was just great in this school. We have everything we need to prepare our kids for success and a promising future for them and the world. But I know that that, everyone is not like me. I also am aware that I don't have enough personal relationships with those that are not like me to really know what other people are up against. I have never been underserved or discriminated against in my life. I'm in no position to come up with the answers for other people's problems. What do I really know about what they deal with on the day-to-day? The school district does, however, have the unique opportunity to find out where we fall short in service of our students and to do something about it. Many of you have dealt with the experience of being an outsider and running for office. At one time or another, you have to go into a room full of people who are different than you and convince them that you're a good choice. I respect that. It's a hard thing to do. Imagine feeling that unease of asking that kind of acceptance every day as a child going to school and for 12 years. You've had a taste of what it's like to feel that discomfort. The difference between you and a student is you have the power to make a change and a student does not. And because you understand it, as a school committee member, you should be doing everything you can to help ease that child's unnecessary burden. As with any decision the governing body makes, the responsible question to ask is can we afford this? Sometimes we have to wait for the money for things. I get that. Sometimes, though, it's like a busted pipe. Ignoring the leak will cause more expensive problems. No one wants to call in the plumber in the middle of the night, but sometimes they can't wait until Monday morning. If financing this audit is your only hurdle, may I suggest a compromise? Vote on your desire for an equity audit because we know we need one and add a threshold that the cost cannot, or maybe should not exceed. You voted for what is right and done what is responsible at the same time. Please vote for an equity audit.
Next we have Corinne McDonald.
Kate Bethan? Thank you. Yep. Does anybody know if Corinne McDonald is actually Corinne Roberts?
Corinne, if you're on, can you put her in?
We want to go to the next person.
Autumn Mathias.
Good evening, everyone. So I have many, many thoughts about this, and I sent an email to Superintendent Ganem and members of the school committee yesterday. But I, you know, will just summarize that and just a few statements. Oh, my name's Autumn Mathias, and I live at 2 Deepwood Drive. I have two children in the district. So as a parent and also as a sociologist, and I appreciated what Superintendent Ganem shared earlier, I wholeheartedly support the equity audit. I feel it is a holistic, systematic assessment with the foundational premise that the educational environment should be fair to each and every student. Also, by ensuring that every student has the appropriate tools to excel, the audit upholds the dignity and worth of every student. So that's my summary. Thank you.
Next we have Nisa Lampart.
Hi. My name's Nisa Lampart, and I live on Manchona's Extension. My son Perry attends Wilbraham Middle School, and he will be a third-generation Minnetoga graduate. I am in favor of the equity audit because I want to ensure our school's policies and practices are fair to every one of our students and the various ways that they can learn. I want confidence that every learner in our district is having their needs met, and I believe an equity audit is the best way forward for every one of our students. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to, James Smith.
Evening, everybody. James Smith, Glendale Road, Hamden. I wasn't able to attend the prior meetings, but I have taken a look at the, I've taken a look at the recordings or watched the recordings. At a previous meeting, one of the commenters, and I'm going to preface this with decorum, one of the commenters labeled some of the comments as white supremacist comments. She did so by saying white percent white supremacists say X, when some of our supporters have said X. To me, this was a backhanded slap against the individuals, and I don't think it's appropriate with the decorum of this kind of conversation. If it comes up again, I intend to stand up and ask the chair to call the person out of order and terminate their comment. We know this is a heated topic, but please, you know, let's have the same decorum that the school committee has amongst themselves when they disagree on an issue. In this matter, and I hadn't planned on speaking about it, but I want to talk about signs. There's a sign up behind me. It says, "We support the audit." I think it's totally inappropriate for this venue. I think it's appropriate to hold it out in the parking lot. I think it's appropriate in, in public areas, but I don't think it's appropriate here. And I would ask the timekeeper, Mr. Kennedy, to stop the time while the chair or the other people decide whether or not that sign is appropriate.
It's been removed.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, talk about newest language. In rebuttal to our anti-CRT message, we hear things like CRT is a theory. It's not being taught in the classroom. That's not what we're worried about. We're worried about the CRT-inspired language that is going into the classroom, telling white children that they're oppressors. Young children have nothing to do with the previous generations. Black people, people of color, that they're oppressed. What kind of racial tension do you think this creates? And we've got other speakers who are going to talk about how audits have led to that kind of language in the classroom. Of course, discussions in the classroom about racism at an age-appropriate level are necessary and good, premising those discussions on the single lens view of CRT, because all white people is oppressors and all people of colors as oppressed is fundamentally wrong and solves no problems. It only serves to divide rather than unite. I'm going to give you a little bit of personal experience because I know some of my critics are sitting back there thinking, oh geez, what's this old white man from Hamden doing, speaking here? He's probably never seen a colored person before, or a person of color, sorry. Well, here's a little bit of my history. I had a wonderful experience of being in the Peace Corps in the Philippines many years ago. My wife, a nursing student at the time, was my part-time languages facilitator, helping move vocabulary and conversation. Love happened. So I'm married to a person of color. I've been married to her for more than 40 years. And she has never encountered any racism here in the town of Hamden, Wilbraham, anywhere we've traveled or in our work. My son was adopted from the Philippines and is unmistakably Asian in his physical characteristics. He attended Wilbraham, our HW RSD K through 12, graduating about 15 years ago. I asked him last week, as an adult, if he ever encountered any issues of race in school or in town that he, that he never told me about as a kid. He said, "No, none." I asked him if any of his Asian friends or black friends ever confided in him, confided in him about racial issues. He said, "No, none. We were just kids having a good time." Of course, he had issues with other kids when they were, when he was in school, but they were the usual kid squabbles. So what's happened in 15 years that led to a recent Minnetoga graduate posting on Facebook last year that he was afraid to be a person of color in the district? What changed? I have my suspicions. My son said his teachers never spoke about white supremacy or oppressed people or color. They certainly taught about racism. His teachers simply promoted getting along with everyone regardless of race. They celebrated racial diversity by studying other cultures. They never tried to deliberately divide children by race as CRT does now. CRT-inspired racial division in our schools has to go away now. The equity audit will bring more CRT language into the school district. I want to register my opposition to the CRT, or to, excuse me, to the equity audit. Thank you.
Sharon?
So, through the chair, if, if we could just do a type of thing we used to do previously where I worked, so it's like Sharon, and then Jimmy, next, Jim Burke. So if you want to have a chair that's sitting right aside, and then right when you leave Sharon, only because there is quite a few people that signed up, so even just moving that along. So it's Sharon, Jim, Julie Baker, and then Kathy. So if we just have people sitting there so they can just come up, and then the next person.
Sharon Kipitz, 252 Main Street, Wilbraham. I'm a retired educator at the university level, have worked with school departments and boards of education on conducting different types of audit. I applaud the school system that you are looking to do an audit. I think if you had just said an audit, you wouldn't have this kind of turnout, which most schools would be delighted to have this many people come to just an audit of anything of your school. Because the word equity, which is sometimes a loaded word for people, it's brought a lot of people here. I really hope that you continue and that you have this audit. It's the only way that you're going to move our school system forward. And that's important. The world is a changing place, and if we don't keep up with it in education, that it's going to be problematic for all of the children and problematic for people in Wilbraham later on. So please vote yes for the audit, and thank you.
Julie Baker. Julie Baker.
Jim Burke, 8 Hill Lane, Wilbraham. I come tonight to speak about, because everybody else had it, the audit. I attended the last two meetings of the school committee. And I listened to your superintendent say, "We need a strategic plan. We haven't had one in 20 years. What have you been up to? What are you guys doing?" You're putting the cart before the horse on this issue. Your superintendent, who you pay a whole ton of money, recommends that you do your strategic plan first. And then if it's necessary, do the audit. My opinion, the audit is a solution looking for a problem. You're paying $60,000 to $150,000. I don't know what the cost is, neither do you. These people already have their audit in the can. They're going to change the dates and the names and send it to you. Check the one in East Long Meadow, check the one in other towns. You'll find the same language. It's in the can. They've got it written. You're paying them for something they've already done and they've sold. I heard a fellow say the other day. I sold my homing pigeon 25 times. Think about it. That's what you're doing. That's what you're doing with this audit. So I ask you to consider, reconsider your thoughts on this and vote no or table it until you get your plan in place, your strategic plan in place. And then if it's necessary, fine. I'm quite sure that the superintendent would tell you, let's go ahead, as he has said before. I don't know why you pay the guys so much money.
By the way, my hourly rate comes down to very low when you take it. Just putting that out there, okay?
So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jim.
Hi, my name's Julie Baker. We live at Hickory Hill Drive. My husband and I have lived here for 28 years. We have four daughters. Some have graduated or will soon graduate. I know some of you feel sorry for me, I know. The main reason we chose this town to live in was the caliber of education for all children who attend this district. Every child's different and ours is no exception. Each of our children learn at a different rate, including one with a learning disability who has needed services since we discovered the issue at 18 months of age. I had a look up. I wanted to know what I was dealing with, so I looked up the definition of equity audit and everybody's said that already, so I won't. Before you vote to spend thousands of dollars on something that we may be able to find the information ourselves on, I'm here tonight to suggest that we first try other things. Do we already have access to some of the information above that equity audit provides? It looks like we do. And if we don't have access, can we get that information? Most of it, I think we can. Here are a few suggestions that are both cost-saving and individualized, taking into account the individualized academic, social, and emotional needs of every child. Can we complete surveys, anonymous or not, up to the individual? Can we hold roundtable discussions with diverse group of parents, teachers, students, and others to help see what others find needed or lacking in our district? For those not able to attend, surveys could be sent and the results brought forward. The survey could be anonymous so that those completing it can truthfully do so. If you want equity, make the survey equitable. As a mom, I'm here to offer my lived experience of over 20 years in this district and ask, why did I have to fight for special services for my child who has a learning disability? Why should any parent have to fight for them? How many other parents have had to fight for these services? Why do we need an equity audit to address this? Do we, as taxpayers, not pay our principals, teachers, and staff to differentiate learning and proactively and actively address the needs of students on a daily basis? If the staff are held accountable to illegal documents such as an IEP, shouldn't there be enough staff to make sure that these documents are followed through on? From what I'm hearing, more staff is needed. There is a mass law in place to ensure equal rights and access for all. So why do we need to spend thousands of dollars on an outside organization to tell us to follow the law? What are we doing as a district to ensure that each student is receiving equal and fair treatment under the law? The fact that we need an equity audit to address and remedy issues that are known and should be addressed and resolved speaks to a bigger problem in this district than they need for an equity audit. All evidence that points to certain students not being treated equally under the law should be brought forward. Let's bring that to light. Perhaps this is where an anonymous survey would be beneficial. Do we have a code of conduct for teachers and staff? What's the code of conduct ramifications for high school English teachers who, with no advance warning or disclaimer, and in the name of social justice, decide to show a violent music video by Childish Gambino depicting the execution-style murder of one man by another without any thought to how this will affect all students? I'm quite sure there was a better option available. A few weeks ago, we had a mental health provider and our district expressed concerns over the high rate of anxiety in our district. It's no wonder we have high levels of anxiety when things like this are done without parents' knowledge or choice to opt out. Why do parents need to sign a permission slip for health class? And of course, it's an act of Congress to ride a different bus home. But this video is somehow allowed with zero thought of how it affects every student. Was anyone held responsible? Did anyone check in on those students after that video? Have we checked in on our teachers who may need more assistance in their classrooms with their students? Have we met with them to see what they are seeing on the front lines? What are their current needs? I have heard more pairs are needed just simply by me asking how things are going. Why do we need an equity audit for this when we know the issue and the solutions needed? If you sit down and have a normal conversation, you can learn a lot and you won't need an outside organization to come in and tell you what we need. The people who live it every day can tell you. There are heroic T-shirts in this district who do make it their mission to individualize in their instruction, who are sensitive to the needs of every student and who do promote equality, who inspire excellence in every student who stands before them. In closing, let us remember our motto, "One family, one community." Now is not the time to pass the buck to an outside source. As one family, one community, let's pull together and solve this as a community and invest the money we would spend on an equity audit in the heroic teachers and parents who are doing their job and hiring more extraordinary teachers.
Anne Shepherd? And Joe Wallace, your next. Everyone. I want to start this by saying what I know everyone believes.
State your name and address.
Anne Shepherd, Camden. Racism is evil. Racism is evil. However, it doesn't mean that you can flip it around and turn it around to make other people feel bad about themselves. I have several examples of what has happened within our district, in our high school, where all of the high schoolers had to sit and watch peers tell them how they had been abused by them. And they were told that they were white oppressors. My child was told he was a white oppressor. He was made to feel like he had done something evil. My child is not evil. My child is not a racist. And these equity studies, equity, I'm sorry, Mr. Gannon, equity is a word for CRT and there is confusion, very much so. Equity is not equality. I am for equality. I am for all children having their needs met. But CRT and these equity audits go under a lot of different names that mislead people. They make it sound like it's something it isn't. Long Meadow has a button on its homepage, "Anti-racism and equity," it says. And when you click on that, plethora of information. It's all based on skin color. It's all based on race. It's making everyone look at something through the prism of skin color and that's not right. That's wrong. And they quote, and they have literature and articles for parents that say, "Look at this book from Ibram X. Kendi, who is an anti-racist. And when you read his book and you read what he writes, he says, 'The only remedy to past discrimination is present discrimination. The only remedy to present discrimination is future discrimination.'" Now, how is that uniting a community? It's a very divisive and very dangerous, dangerous road to go down. So please, if you are considering doing this equity, equity audit, consider keeping it in-house because these equity audits lead you down a path where there's a predetermined conclusion and it's a lot of money. And no children, not mine, not anyone's child or grandchild, should be told that they are an oppressor when they've done nothing wrong and be made to feel bad. No one's child, black, white, brown, yellow, whatever color, it's wrong. It's evil. And racism is evil. And reverse racism, whatever you want to call it, is evil. Thank you.
Joe Lawless, L.A.W.L.A.S.S. Warren Road, Wilbraham. First off, I'm confident everyone in this room supports all children receiving the best education in an environment that promotes diversity and inclusion. I provide an example in last, two weeks ago at this school committee meeting of ways we can celebrate diversity and inclusion here in the school. I think we'll cover a lot of topics. It would be very helpful. That said, I'm greatly concerned about what I've seen in my research of equity audits. I read the Long Meadow Equity Audit as well as a half dozen others. While some of the content was positive and drove diversity and inclusion, what concerns me most about the alts are the segregation, division, and lack of diversity of thought in the follow-up actions and resources. Per the Boston Globe, Wellesley High School's Diversity Equity Inclusion Council sent an email out and created a segregated affinity space not permitting white students into a space of mourning. Is this inclusion? Should my children not have the opportunity to mourn with their friends, family, classmates, based on the color of their skin? In California, advanced placement math classes were being considered for removal in the name of equity so all students could have the same outcome. Both sides of this argument have also been very firm. It's education and not politics. Yet, when you read through the Long Meadow Diversity and Inclusion page, the same page Angie referenced, their articles and resources are mainstream media editorials. Two weeks ago, they had an article that said 50 years of Donald Trump's racism. Now, to the school's credit, they removed that two weeks ago. Other articles are from New York Times, CNN, NPR, ESPN, all main contributors on the page. Is our plan to use mainstream media editorials to teach our children to educate our parents? How would the other side of this argument feel if the educational resources were from right-leaning editorial pages? I wouldn't support that either. Again, it's education, not politics. Also, I saw no diversity of thought on the Diversity Equity Inclusion page. Again, we all preach education, not politics. Why are there no books or references from differing opinions, conservative people of color? Tom, Dr. Thomas Sowell would be a great example. His opinions on discrimination, racism, and culture are profound and celebrate in academic circles. His life experience is growing up in Harlem, attending Harvard, Columbia, and a PhD from Chicago University. Why would they not have this on Diversity Equity Inclusion page? The point of my public comment is this. I'm highly concerned with the push to bring mainstream political editorials, articles, and resources to supplement and in some cases replace curriculum that will not be supported by large portion of our town, me included. For members of the school committee supporting this, I would employ you to listen to these warnings. Our focus should be on building educational foundations so all children in this school district can reach their goals and dreams and not fill them with divisive mainstream political rhetoric. Thank you.
Daniel Manning, 13 Ruth Drive, Wilbraham. I'm here to kind of ask you guys a lot of questions in my time that I hope you can answer. In doing an equity audit, what company do you intend to hire? Hasn't been decided. Okay. So you can't answer my questions is what you're going to tell me?
No, that's not generally how public comment works.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I'm asking you to answer the questions. As a human being, as a human being, let's answer the questions that are put in front of you. So if you haven't even looked into a company.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. In, in our operating rooms, we do have the opportunity to respond to individuals during public comment if the chair determines that it's appropriate. So we do have the, we do have the ability to do that. I think the, if you do have information very straightforward, questions like that, if anything is a matter of opinion.
Nope.
Wouldn't answer that, but if you're just asking for factual information, I don't, our policy does support that.
The next couple of questions I can't ask because you haven't even researched the company, which I would have asked. You have researched.
In the Corrector Committee Subcommittee, we've researched many companies. One that I thought stood out was Mass Insom.
In doing that, if that is the company that you're looking at too.
That's the first time.
Let's look into the three recent towns or cities that they've audited, get their audits, read them. If it's exactly the same, why are we spending the money? You know what I mean? What criteria have you reviewed to recommend that we actually have an equity audit? What brought you to that determination that the town should have an equity audit? What's the proposed cost to the town for that equity audit? We could probably invest that in a teacher. If they're just going to give us a canned answer, like every other town that they've gone to, to sell and sell and sell and sell and make the money off the towns, they're a business. That's what they do. Okay? To rebut a little bit of the rankings that were out there. NISH puts out national rankings for schools. Okay, for 2021. Okay, we're at the 394th best school district in the entire country. Okay, our teachers are ranked 409 in the entire country. Think about how many school districts are in the entire country. All right, we got an individual who's going to Berkeley. Okay, could we have taught something slightly different and helped maybe a tiny bit? He's in Berkeley. Pretty good. Like our school system served well. Okay, I moved to this town because of the school systems. Okay? In Western Mass, we're ranked one for the best teachers by NISH. We have the best teachers. So I think our kids are getting a good education. It's ranked number two for the best place to teach. So our teachers like to teach here. They like our town. Our parents come out, all of them, to support our teachers. Fourth safest in all of Western Mass. I don't know who one through three is. It's pretty good. I think we're doing a really good job. I want to give a kudos to our teachers. But we need to actually look into what needs to be done prior to just throwing money at a problem. The questions I asked, you don't have the answers to. I went to my boss. I manage a business for a college. I went to him with a proposal to vote on something, to spend a bunch of money for my business. He'd ask why? And I'd have to have analytical data to back it up or he'd say no. I'm asking you to do that research, put a proposal together, put it in a town meeting, let the town vote. Let us all vote on what we want to have happen before we just go out and spend the money. Because maybe we need a new teacher, an extra teacher. It's 150 grand. You can get one full-time, one part-time. And maybe that helps. So I am against the audit right now. I can't say in the future I will be against it. If the data is there and analytical is there, then I may come back and be different. But right now, I'm saying do not vote for this until you actually have data to prove we need it. Thank you.
Paul McConnell, are you here? On deck is Brian Bracy.
Good evening. My name is Paul McConnell. I live at, uh, 6 Cooley Drive, got, uh, four kids. One of them has graduated, but I still have three in the district. Obviously, this is a hot topic issue. That's why you've got quite a few people here. I know, Mr. Gannon, you, you put up your article and it said that they're not teaching critical race theory in this school district, and that's good news. I'm glad to hear it. I hope that continues. I hope you can understand and appreciate when the NEA puts out a document that says critical race theory is their number one priority, and they want it in all 50 states and 13,000-plus school districts, people get a little hot. We don't want our children indoctrinated. All right, that's why we're here. We're fine with history. You want to teach them facts? Teach them facts. You want to teach them reading, writing, and arithmetic? We're okay with that. You want to teach them Marxist ideology crap? I mean, critical race theory is more of a, well, it's, it's less of an academic, serious academic body of knowledge than it is a hustle. They're looking for money, and they're going to get it any way they can. And if you want to throw tens of thousands of dollars at them, guess what? They're going to take it. So that's why people are here. We're, we're not against people being taught history. It, it's a part of the country. We should teach them history. We should teach them about slavery, teach them about racism. We should teach them about a lot of things. But we shouldn't be teaching them that the only thing that matters to them is the color of their skin. That's wrong. That's why I'm here, and that's why a lot of other people are here. So I hope you can appreciate that. Thank you for your time.
Brian Bracy.
Yes, I can. Thank you. So we're going to pretend I'm Brian Bracy. Renee Bracy is white. We live in, at 50 Brenard Road in Wilbraham. And for, because these are notes, I'm going to just focus on he, so as a professor, as a, as a graduate-level professor, dealing with issues of race and equity in schools, he's often teaching, he's often teaching students about the, the importance of diversity in the workforce. In order to address, in order to have a more diverse, in order to have a more diverse workforce, it requires us to be aware of what diversity looks like in terms of not just race and not just racial background, but also in terms of gender and the disability status and experience. Given what he's seen in our Wilbraham workforce, one of the things that he notes is that when his children go to school, when our children go to school, they thus far will not see a single teacher of color in their classes that look like them. We were thankful that in kindergarten, he was able to have a pre, uh, kindergarten teacher who was Hispanic. What we noticed, though, was that her class was the most diverse class of any other school, than any other class in, in the school. So every other class, there was maybe one or two students of color, but in her class, there were 10. Why was it that all of the students of color were placed in one classroom with one teacher of color? One might argue that that was because it would be helpful to those students of color, that they're starting school, they get to see themselves, they get to experience things, they get to experience things that teachers will understand. They'll understand their, their background. They'll understand their, their life experience. Another way of looking at it is saying that we're going to clump all the kids together because they're all the same, and it'll be easier to teach them because they're all the same. What an equity audit would do was to provide you clearer guidance on how to support those students of color, not just guessing where to put them, but with clear evidence on how to best support them in these classrooms, and also how to find more teachers from diverse backgrounds. So it's not just as simple as we're going to hire people, but we're going to find out how to diversify in various ways. Makes no sense to me, so I'm going to say finally, he wholeheartedly supports the equity audit and asks that you vote yes for this motion. If nothing else on here makes any sense.
So I, I, and I, I apologize. I know that it's public comment, a public conversation, but, but you, you need to know, we, we have a kindergarten screening process that we go through to place our students, and one of the things that we would never, ever look at is what color of skin they're on in placing them in what classroom they're in.
Next, and Tracy Farnsworth are on deck. Is Sarah here?
Say the name again.
Okay, we'll circle back. So Tracy will be next, and then Kelly Norris is on deck. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tracy Farnsworth. I live on Red Bridge Row here in Wilbraham. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board this evening. One of the foundations of a strong community is at schools. We here in Wilbraham have a school system that has been a strong foundation of, of our community for many years. As a result of our strong schools, many people seek to move into our community. I think we heard a few people make mention of that this evening. We have heard on many occasions, the school board and the superintendents speak about the quality of educators employed in our district. Now, we are hearing a lot of talk about an equity audit. The equity audit calls into question the quality of our educators and administration. The very nature of an audit means that you are looking to find deficiencies and omissions. Our educators and administrators should be ensuring an equal, equal education for all our students. By conducting an equity audit, our school is saying that there are issues within our school that our teachers and administrators are failing to address. Has the school board lost faith in the ability of our schools to provide an equal education? What has happened in our schools to make the school board believe that this type of audit is even necessary? If this audit is conducted and problems are found, who in the administration is going to be held responsible for the failure of our students not being educated equally? Have you, the Hamden, Wilbraham Regional School District School Committee, and Superintendent Gannon lost control of your schools? Make no mistake about it, an equity audit would only serve to divide the school system and community further. To reiterate, we have school administrators who should be in touch with their staff and be reviewing their performance regularly. If a staff member or teacher is currently found to not be treating and teaching each individual student fairly and unbiased, they should be dealt with swiftly and decisively to ensure our educators are being held to the highest standard. An equity audit is implying that our school administration does not have knowledge or control over what is happening in our classrooms. We, as a community, expect our school administrators to hold each building principal and teacher to the standard of a fair and unbiased education now. An equity audit is unquestionably counterproductive to this goal. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kelly Norris. I live in Amherst, and I teach here at Minnetoga Regional High School. Um, so I'm going to be brief. I already sent a letter to you all, so, um, I won't go over all my points in that letter, but I just want to say, as a teacher here of 18 years, I'm an English teacher. Um, I'm also a club advisor to the Diversity and Culture Club. I work with our students of color regularly, and I have for many years. I'm here to please ask for this equity audit. I've been waiting a long time to put some data to the experiences that I see regularly and help all of our students. It would be a benefit to everybody. Um, I'm also here with Kyle Garen, who's an art teacher here at the high school, and the advisor of our Gay Straight Alliance Club, and he's here in support of the equity audit as well. So thank you so much for considering it, and I really hope it passes and guides our work over the next, however, many years. Thank you.
Karen Walker, you're on deck.
Hi, I'm Sarah Kowalski, Ruth Joe Wilbraham. I'm a little surprised to hear tonight, after our superintendent's introduction about critical race theory, what it is and what is, is, what it is not, so many people still being unclear about the idea of what it is and what it is not. And something that's not even on the table, to hear so many people use up our time to talk about it, is a little disconcerting to me. So I'll try to be brief and speak about something that is on the table, which is the equity audit. I'm here to ask you to support and go through with the equity audit as originally planned. For so many reasons, and for so many people, uh, it's important. Just to address a couple of things about why do we have to hire an outside company? I'm a thrifty person. Don't like to spend money where I don't have to, don't have a lot of money to spend. We tend to think sometimes as Wilbraham being one community, um, or the district being one community. And this might be our motto, but if we look around, it's most certainly not. We have a lot of diversity here, uh, whether it's very apparent or not, as we can see tonight, you know? When, if I can remember what I wanted to say. When there's a problem in an institution, it's very hard for that institution to see it clearly. Something like a survey sounds like a great idea, but we all know that surveys also cost money and need people to design them and spend a lot of time and effort to design them appropriately um, and to institute them and to gather the data to analyze that data, and then to come back with recommendations. Basically, the idea of a survey is kind of what an equity audit would be. So either way, you have to fund it, whether it's from someone inside the district or from a professional company coming outside of the district. As someone who has limited finances myself, I try to do everything I can possibly do on my own, from home repair to, I don't know, my hair that didn't come out really good. But sometimes it, it really, you know, needs to go to professional, and it's worth it for that investment for an outside company to come in and say, you know, let's take a look at it, see what we're doing right. Let's see where we can improve. I am an educator. I'm on the front lines every day to tell you horror stories of some of the things I've seen. Don't need to do that here, just to know that, uh, one of the best things I ever learned going to school at Minnetoga, graduating from this community, was the idea to look into things really deeply and to always ask questions, and that's what the audit would help us do. Being a good student, a good writer in high school, um, it was great. I felt good when I was complimented. I'll tell you what I felt even better, when Mr. Trimmer would tear apart my work and show me where I can make it better. When I had to scrap an essay, um, in high school and completely rewrite it and start again. When Ms. Latina would pick about every little grammar thing that could possibly be wrong in my essay, because that made me a better writer, made me a better human, made me better aware of where I had weaknesses and strengths, and how I could do it better. And that's what the equity, the equity audit could help us do as a community. And I think that's about all I need to say right now, so thank you guys for listening.
And if you look at the towel from where you're sitting, it's not focused on this speaker. I just want to make sure.
I can't manually turn it. Sound echoes in here, and it's picking up on the echoing sound from the ceiling.
I don't need to be seen anymore.
Now you are.
My name is officially, my name is Reverend Dr. Karen Louise Rux Walker, product of the Springfield Public School Systems. I was named in a lawsuit, um, against this segregation. So at 12 years old, I know what it's like to ride a bus and have rocks thrown at you because your parents wanted you to have a better education. I know what it's like for your mom to fight for me to be placed in a higher class with students whose scores were equal to mine. I am the statistics that you presented earlier. I know what it's like to get a lower grade while my white classmate gets, did less, or the male classmate did less, yet got graded higher, and it went unquestioned. I also know what it's like to go home to a community who affirmed me, my gifts and my talents. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent, for the clarity and the position of the Wilbraham School Districts, and thus dispelling the innumerable myths on CRT, the distortions and the untruths. It really is on you to take the concerns that you've heard tonight and use your full power to assure that these terms, as expressed by these citizens and these parents, remain, that those terms remain separate and distinct, and that no child, no child undergoes half-ill-equipped and ill-informed educators in their efforts intended to inform and educate, but in fact humiliates. Nobody wins. Nobody grows. Equity audit is an opportunity, and contrary to my neighbor, oh, by the way, I'm Wilbraham, Springfield Street. It is not an indicator of a wrong, but rather, it is an opportunity to examine the systems and the methodologies and to keep what is good and to build off of it to do better from the lessons learned. So those, those children, our children, will not go through what I and others have gone through, not simply because of my race, but as a girl, as a child with a disability. Some of our children who are struggling with their gender identities. Truth, as you know, is difficult and painful, but it's important and it's empowering. Learning is challenging. All you got to do is take one algebra class to know that. It's sometimes messy, but when we stay with it, we grow. And when we learn from one another, we grow even more. We are a mosaic of knowledge, wonder, contributions, and we ought to create and support an environment that supports every child. There's value in building children who are informed and affirmed. As a Black African-American woman, I daily experience the intersectionality of race and gender. The daily encounters of implicit bias, and unlike my, um, neighbor, I have experienced racism right here in Wilbraham. However, I've also experienced the quality of achievement and engaging with people who are more informed. I daily experience the appreciation of living history that evolved due to every person here in this room in our community. How will we know what we need to do if we don't assess our strengths and our limitations? How will we soar if we then do not provide guidelines based on informed and objective information? Consider that the next time you stop at a traffic light or see a rocket go into space, or a plane in the air, or even if you try to explain Einstein's theory of relativity. All you have to do is vacuum your living room. Perhaps in learning, especially from our children, we won't express such anger or bitterness towards one another. My neighbor John had a good point. Maybe we need to look at other options and consider them in the context of other work and audits and do this in a more cost-efficient way. I came with unequivocal intention to say I unequivocally support the equity audit. But I heard my neighbors talk about a commitment to truth, but also a commitment to being judicious and being, and approaching this in a cost-effective way. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chairman. My name is Richard Howell. I live at...
I live at 47 Glen Drive in Wilbraham. I'm here to address you because at the last meeting, many of us here expressed our great concerns. We had expected the committee would deliberate more on the issue given those concerns, but there seems there is a rush to push a vote. Where is the pressure coming from? It appeared the school committee members were not sure what an equity audit meant the last time we were here. Were not sure what work had been done, much less what it involved. One member did claim to have worked on this for over a year, but with who? Were other members of the school committee aware of this? And it appeared none from the reaction. We were told that there may have been a vote or a discussion of some type, but what did the minutes reflect? It appeared unclear at that time. If they exist, had they been produced? If they were, why was such an important discussion forgotten in this type of instance? It appeared that such an important discussion, all of a sudden, seemed to go to the direction of putting this on a vote at the next meeting. Is this committee ready for such a vote under these circumstances? The Massachusetts Regional School Committee Guidelines, which you follow, suggest not having an equity audit in the master plan, which you are currently working on or should be working on. The expense for an equity audit is sizable. What does an equity audit measure? Racial problems, gender problems, so-called disparity of wealth problems? What is the justification for that? This is being pushed by extreme leftist elements in the government apparatus and in pressure groups throughout the Commonwealth and the country. The end result is to implement critical race theory. You cannot have that without the equity audit. Let's not fool ourselves. And they do exist in districts in the state. It is an ideological tool recognized against all students. This district, in the past, has proved to provide a very good education for all students. I grew up in this system with a similar demographic makeup that we have today. Again, I ask, what has changed? If there were problems, were they not addressed? And another extreme program is only going to make it worse. The committee does not have enough facts to present the parents and the citizens of this district to justify a yes vote of such an audit. There is plenty to justify a no vote. We, the parents and the citizens of this district, have not received a direct answer or no answer at all. Parents especially and citizens have a right to participate in a process that is critical to these students prior to any vote, studying our real history, which isn't being taught, and it's being taught by elements that are pushing critical race theory, by the way, I'll add that. The histories that should be taught clearly demonstrates the real history, that the United States is the greatest country in the world and that those of all races contributed to it. That is not mentioned. The American Revolution ushered in the greatest movement for freedom the world had ever seen. People come from all over the world to live here, including majority non-white countries. Implementing an equity audit and CRT would do the very opposite of that. Teaching all students that our nation is systematically oppressive, teaching white students to be ashamed of their country and non-white students that this country was never meant for them is equally pernicious and disgraceful. If we want our students to treat one another with respect, if we want to treat one another with respect, if we have problems we need to solve, I strongly suggest that I'm against putting in an equity audit. If you want to solve those problems, bring God back to the folks, where in schools. Thank you.
Larry Horace, you're on deck. Good evening, everyone. I prefer to stand, is that okay with all of you?
Please sit.
I have to sit?
Yeah, only because everybody else is sat.
Oh, I thought so, I can, people can hear me now? Okay, I will sit. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Tara Kozov, and I'm from Wilbraham at 6 Beechwood Drive, and I'd like to begin by saying, true, the Massachusetts framework indicates that CRT will not be taught, but all over the country, districts are saying, oh, no, we're not teaching CRT, and only time will tell if this denial proves to be true. I doubt it. Both the equity and anti-racism movements are rooted in critical race theory, a theory that Abram X Kendi, author of How to Be an Anti-Racist, has publicly stated is one that has shaped his anti-racist activism and the anti-racist movement as a whole. In a recent podcast interview with Slate, Dr. Kendi was asked, would you consider yourself to be a critical race theorist? Dr. Kendi answered, I can't imagine a pathway to being anti-racist that does not engage critical race theory. I mean, critical race theorists, specifically over the last 40 years, have been so foundational to providing a structural analysis of race and racism, which is to be anti-racist is to have that structural analysis, end quote. A few weeks ago, a teacher in this district and who is the vice president of the HWEA sat before you and insisted, and I quote, "Critical race theory is not part of any social studies curriculum and has never been part of a social studies curriculum frameworks." And basically, critical race theory is not a part of a conversation in Massachusetts in any educational setting anywhere, anywhere. She went on to say, "And for the first three people to start stirring up this idea that CRT is going to be part of some issue here in Hammond, Wilbraham, is false, and unfortunately, they're stirring up fear," end quote. Now, let me reiterate what Abram X Kendi, author of How to Be an Anti-Racist, said when asked if he is a critical race theorist. I can't imagine a pathway to anti-racist that does not engage critical race theory. I mean, critical race theorists, specifically over the last 40 years, have been so foundational to providing a structural analysis of race and racism, which is to be anti-racist is to have that structural analysis. Given that Abram X Kendi is widely considered to be a founding father of the anti-racist and equity movements, and his book, How to Be an Anti-Racist, is a foundational part of all conversations surrounding anti-racism in school districts across Massachusetts, including right next door in Long Meadow. I have evidence of that from the Long Meadow website here for you tonight. And he himself admits that engaging critical race theory is foundational to being an anti-racist. I find it alarming that the vice president of the HWEA does not know that Abram X Kendi's beliefs, the very beliefs that are driving her call for an equity audit, are rooted in critical race theory. It's important to also note that Abram X Kendi was a keynote speaker at the Massachusetts Teachers Association EMAC Conference last December for a weekend-long conversation on, and I quote, "white privilege and racism, ethnic and racial identity, and economic and social justice," end quote. Again, I will note, sponsored by the Massachusetts Teachers Association. I am stunned that a union leader in our district was seemingly unaware of this week-long, weekend-long conversation that included Abram X Kendi, a founding father of the anti-racism movement, whose ideological roots for that movement are found in critical race theory. And yet, the vice president of the HWEA sat before you two weeks ago and claimed that critical race theory is again, and I quote, "not part of a conversation in Massachusetts in anywhere, anywhere, any educational setting." That is her claim. And the vice president of the HWEA's claim is false, based on what I brought forward tonight, and it shows a breathtaking lack of depth or breadth of foundational knowledge on the anti-racism and equity movements. I am very concerned and stunned to see that many of the decision-makers and activists pushing for an equity audit in our district seem to have no idea of the root principles or ideology of this movement, as their limited knowledge and public statements suggest they have not done their homework on this. These are the people who are leading this movement. Their public statements delivered here during the last three HWRSD school committee meetings make that abundantly clear, and we as a community and you as a community should all be very concerned about that as we decide whether or not to move forward with an equity audit, which I am firmly against. I thank you for your time, and again, share with you that I've documented all my sources and all my facts, including links to everything I paint, as well as a transcript of the excerpt from Abram X Kendi's interview quoted here tonight, and I thank you very much for your time.
Larry Horace?
I'm here at a point I wondered if they have...
Thank you.
Michael Squindo, 12 Pond Road, Wilbraham, Massachusetts. No person can be strictly, can be defined strictly by the color of their skin, their gender, their sexual orientation, or any other singular characteristic. Likewise, no person can disregard these aspects of themselves or others and simultaneously appreciate the diversity that lives among us. I appreciate my own diversity, not in spite of the challenges from others to recognize my privilege, but because of them, because of their willingness to walk with me through that process. Ms. Caruana and Ms. Ryan both shared similar language about the need for an equity audit during a November 5th meeting last year, in which Ms. Ryan noted, you need to know where you start to know where you are going. I'm not afraid where the equity audit will take us, and neither should anyone in this community be fearful, because as Ms. Caruana so aptly pointed out, data is just data. I am, however, hopeful, hopeful that you will use that data, as Ms. Caruana shared, to have the conversation about what, about how that data can create more diversity, equity, and inclusion in all aspects of our school environment. I am hopeful that you will use your privilege and power as a board to pursue an equity audit that will not only put our system and equities at the forefront of our discussion towards our mission, but highlight the successes we have accomplished as well. I want to reiterate what I wrote in an email to you all regarding equity and equality, as the meanings have been misunderstood during various public comments. The etymology of the word equal lives in the Latin equiles, meaning uniform or identical. Equality focuses on the entities being compared. In this respect, it assesses whether oranges are identical to apples. To apply equality to education in this way would be artificial and insincere, ignoring or removing the unique beauty of each person. We cannot make children equal because no two people are identical. Equity stems from the Latin word equitas, or the uniform relation of one thing to others. In this way, the focus shifts from the two entities as being equal to the relationship between them as equal. Some here would have you understand equity to dictate an outcome. However, as now understood, we can see educational equity would ensure a fair and appropriate process for each student to learn and leave them to determine their own outcome. We can educate our students with equity. We can provide an education that is consistent and ensures the process through which one learns is equal. To do this, we need to understand how our system fail, fall short of providing an equal process for each student and group of students. I want to quote Edmund Burke from 1774 in his speech to the electors of Bristol, when he says, "Your representative owes you not his industry only, but his judgment." And what I think is most important is the next line when he says, "And he betrays you instead of serving you if he sacrifices it to your opinion." While I am clearly in favor of an equity audit, it is neither my privilege nor authority as a citizen of this community to make that decision. That power and responsibility sits solely with you, members of the school committee. I and my fellow citizens have given you our opinions, our facts, and our truths. Now, it is time for you to act on your own judgment. As you weigh the evidence both presented and known to you, I want to leave you with comments made by members of this school committee, comments I believe should be carried forward in perpetuity of all that you do. Mr. Kiernan shared, and Superintendent Gannon echoed, that you are role models for our students and our community. Dr. Buntempe made an important connection to the equity audit when he said, "I want to know the diagnosis before I start throwing treatments at the wall." And Ms. Caruana connected all the above in a most meaningful way when she said, "It is a hollow service if we just say we are going to do it." A no vote tonight will be heard by all those in need of this audit, that their school committee, their administration, and by extension, their teachers do not believe that each student is worth what equates to about one hour of work at minimum wage. A yes vote would empower our students. It will role model that a leader does not act without a full understanding of the situation. It will be, thank you.
John Hurst?
What's the last name on that?
Yes, you're after the...
That's okay, I needed a moment. Hi, everybody. I'm John Broderick, Stony Hill Road, 22-year resident. Al's my fourth superintendent. I've gone through many, many school committee members. Some of you, at least one of you I've worked with, most of you I know or have had conversations with, a couple of you I've never met, welcome. Thank you all. I trust you all. Like most people, I moved here for the school district. I had two girls that went through it. They've been out for a while now, and I trust you guys to make the right decision. And let me just say, I hope that decision is to move forward with the equity audit, in case I forget later, and the strategic plan as soon as you can. I'm not going to rebut or point by point a lot of things that have come out tonight. I think a lot of people have made some really good comments. I think some people have some issues with facts versus opinions. Did want to make, one of my new favorite quotes is, "Education, not politics." And I would add to that, that's not my original comment of mine, I won't call out the author of it, but I would say, you know, religion, not politics, too. Again, I trust you guys to make the right decision based on the facts as you see them, and I think you know what the facts are. Unfortunately, it definitely seems that this is a political issue, and I would suggest, and you may agree or you may not, but just put the politics and the religion and the conservative and the liberal and everything else aside. We all bring that when we make decisions, but you guys, as the school committee, I don't think any of that has any business in those decisions. You need to make decisions based on the best interest of the students. It worries me that people, there seems to be this trend lately of redefining things, as I call it, there's probably a better term for it, redefining an equity audit as CRT, redefining and also being anti, and a lot of my neighbors and fellow residents, there's some common threads, not through all of them, but to being against and redefining things. Common core comes to mind, Black Lives Matter, the Asian and Pacific Islanders issue, the equity audit, critical race theory, seems to be a common theme here, people being against those things. And I'm kind of jumping around here, but I just want to hit on some, you know, what I think are some major points. Internal versus external audit, I'm going to, I'm a tax accountant, I'm an accountant, you know, having an audit done, typically, it's done by an outside firm, there's reasons for that, and I'm not going to go into what they are, I think you all understand what they are, and so that's, so that addresses that point. I want to read a few things, you know, earlier today, I just Googled, you know, what is an equity audit in schools? And my question before that is, you know, why wouldn't we want to perform an equity audit? So, some of the things that came up were, and these were no particular author, the last one was actually from a book by Sterling McKenzie and Shurick or something, and from 2009, the other ones weren't identified, but equity audits are a leadership tool used to collect data that informs the process of removing programmatic barriers that impede full participation, access, and opportunity for all students to receive an equitable and excellent education. Seems like a no-brainer. Another thing that popped up under that was around the principle of fairness, you know, in education, the term equity refers to the principle of fairness, while it's often used interchangeably with the related principle of equality, equity encompasses a wide variety of educational models, programs, and strategies that may be considered fair, but not necessarily be considered fair, but not necessarily equal. I'm probably telling you folks things that you already know. What's included in an equity audit? This was from that book that I referenced, and these people wrote a book about, you know, doing equity audits, so we may be a little biased, but the goal of an equity audit is to identify institutional practices that produce discriminatory trends in data that affects students. Schools and districts conduct audits to analyze data in three key areas: programmatic equity, teaching quality equity, and achievement equity. You know, the audit itself, this is some notes I took from looking at Long Meadow, people keep focusing on race, it doesn't, you, and again, you know this, it doesn't just deal with race, it deals with race, yes, but also ESL, special needs, males versus females, socioeconomic issues, and all these things, it's unique info to HW RSD. We would never look at Long Meadows Building Study and apply it to our buildings that might be the same age or similar, we would do a unique study and get unique Wilbraham information. I'm probably running out of time here, but the Mars response to a question that I can only guess what it was, because I didn't get the question, but.
The time's up, Tom. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm gonna say thank you to those that, when I say time's up, they stop immediately, that's very respectful, and that's been the trend, so thank you very much, everybody.
Good evening. I'm sure you're all tired, so I'll try to keep this brief. My name is Linda DeGrady, I live at Seven Pleasant Few Road. I speak to you as the parent of a Minnetonka graduate, a lifelong educator, and a very concerned citizen, and I'm also speaking to share my expectation that you will vote in favor of the proposed equity audit. An equity audit is an assessment of where the district is in relation to educational policy, student services, academic and co-curricular programs, staffing, and decision-making practices. Fiscal audits are conducted all the time in the spirit of good stewardship and accountability. Educational policies and practices should not be exempt from an objective assessment. If we do not examine our educational practices, we have failed in the most elemental function of schools, educating our children about what is, what has been, what may come, and how to organize information to make good life decisions. An audit, conducted by an experienced and independent agency, will provide our community with an assessment of our current educational practices. Several incidents in my life have affected my ability to learn about equity and access, and I will share two with you. When I was a first grader, living on Hungry Hill in Springfield and attending Armour Street School, I invited my good school friend Rosie to my house to play. She thanked me, but said she could not come, because she would not be welcome in my white neighborhood. Rosie was black, and had obviously had the conversation that black parents have with their kids about dealing with white America, a conversation my parents never had to have. Those conversations are still ongoing. My daughter, a 2008 Minnetonka graduate, was Korean-born. She was the object of both passive and overt bullying. She typically endured being called a chink, a dumb chink, and once broke down in class in tears, prompting a call from the school to me. That was all the HW RSD system did, one call, no intervention, no discussion with the primary bully or the family. It was after the third overt incident that we contacted the parent indirectly. That conversation revealed the obvious, that teenage apple had not fallen far from that parent tree. I am fully aware, and they're here tonight, a vocal group in town has urged you to vote in the negative. That group has equated their dislike of the principles of critical race theory with this audit, and that is misinformation. Please do not let it distract you from the reality at hand. A negative vote will reveal a disturbing implicit bias in this community about diversity, equity, and inclusion. Audits do not tell us what to do, they reflect the status of what we are doing now. The audit is really the easiest step in an honest assessment of current practice. The hardest part is evaluating the observations and recommendations for potential changes to how HW RSD carries out its educational mission. I suggest that you engage a wide variety of people in the HW RSD communities to do that work, should it arise. Globally, we live in a world of great diversity. Our children will need skill sets and critical thinking to confront the challenges of their futures, to learn how to evaluate information, to recognize untruths, and to embrace facts. Our job as citizens, as parents, and as educators is to prepare them for those challenges. An equity audit, done properly, will provide the foundation for this most important job as citizens, parents, and educators. Rather than teaching them what to think, our responsibility is to teach them how to think. Thank you for your attention to these comments, and I hope you vote in favor of the audit.
Thank you.
John Kirsch, I live in Hampton. I have two 10-year-olds in the school district, and they love it. What I don't like is what I'm hearing here tonight, and it's that we are coming up with this equity, but no one is telling us how we're going to find out what is equitable and who is being punished for not being equitable. Is it the system? Is it the system, folks? Is the system broken? If it's the system, we gotta fix the system, okay? But then, that would affect all of the children, correct? If we're fixing the entire, if we're putting in things in the system and changing the system, we better know why we're doing it. And I don't hear that here from anyone tonight, that we know what we're doing and why we're doing it. You better be very clear what the metrics are to what, you know, we only get, the equals only is as good as the input, okay? If the information is junk going in, it's gonna be junk coming out. And I don't hear anybody saying, okay, this is how we're, you know, gonna come up with, this, this, this is the equation we're gonna use, and here's, you know, or this is the metrics we're gonna use when we go through the schools or through the district to find out, you know, what is inequity. I don't know right now what, you know, what is inequitable, what's equitable. I mean, that term's being thrown around, it's ambiguous, it can be whatever you want it to be. Until you guys know exactly what you're spending this money on specifically, you really should vote no. And that's not to say that anybody here that wants to have equality in the schools, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't see inequality around every corner, maybe you do. I, I've been mistreated as a white guy because I'm white. I've had racist things screamed at me, I've had things done to me, okay? That doesn't mean that the people that, you know, that race is a bad race. I ran into a schmuck, okay? That's gonna happen, okay? And as parents, we can't go in and go, okay, our children, our child has been bullied. That's happened already in this school district, for me, for my kids. But I'm not gonna sit there and try and blame some group of people on that. We all want what's best for our kids. This equity audit is not, at this point, I don't know how anyone could back it until you can come up to me and show me and everyone in this room what you're looking to do specifically. Show it in black and white, make it as transparent as possible, because then, if it's, if it's good for my kids, I will agree to it. But everything you guys are telling me today doesn't tell me anything. And so if you can't explain to us as parents why we should be, oh, yeah, this is the greatest thing ever, and, and see it in black and white, then you shouldn't do it. It's not in the best interest of the kids if you can't even explain it. And those of you out there that are for it, you can't explain it either. Please, you know, if you got all kinds of information, bring it next time. You know, bring a stack of information that shows you specifically what we can do and why this is good, because it sure doesn't seem that way. It seems like a Trojan horse to get CRT into our schools, and I certainly will pull my children out if you start trying to do racist stuff. You tell my children to make their wife racist, that's not right, okay? There's none of that, that should not happen, shouldn't happen, and if your child was mistreated because of the color of their skin, that should not happen in this district.
Please address the chair.
Okay, I'm sorry. But the point, and my point is, that if there is any of that stuff, that should be taken and fixed, but that doesn't mean we need an equity audit, okay? So I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I'm heated, but we're talking about my children, okay? I don't even wanna be here tonight. I'm here for my kids, okay? And I want you to seriously think about it, and think about it not based on the pressures you're getting from whatever side politically. Let's be honest, there's a lot of political nonsense with this, okay? And that's affecting everything, and it's blurring the lines. But until you guys really can see and can, can, you know, articulate it to the rest of us, why this is great and why it should be done, you guys shouldn't vote no. I mean, let's be honest, if you don't know what you're voting for, don't vote. And that's it, that's all I need from it. Thanks.
My name is Celeste Ferris, I'm at Two Captain Row, Wilbraham, and here's school committee board members. I hope we will vote in opposition to the audit being performed for various reasons. It is a fact that racism exists in the schools, both by teachers and students. This audit doesn't need to be performed to determine that information. The audit is very expensive, this kind of money should not be used to reveal information you already know. The money will be so much better spent to determine how to combat racism in the school versus that there is racism. Evidence already exists on that topic. If it did not, we wouldn't be having this as a topic of discussion right now. I know for a fact a school outside the district says it's not being, CRT is not being taught in the schools, yet reveals itself through such places as all the books that are required during the, required reading during the school year in the English classes, and they all focus on oppression. Critical race theory is not a viable option to curbing racism. In fact, it has been proven to create greater racism between people than existed before the implementation of CRT. It is very divisive among races. Documented examples of CRT where white people are deemed the oppressors and other races are oppressed, an elementary, for example, an elementary student, I know this for a fact, tells her dad that she was taught in school that white people are bad. Example number two, a very open-minded, high-performing teacher's annual evaluation score on qualities did not coincide with her high performance. When she inquired to her supervisor, what could she have done differently to have improved her score, she was informed, nothing, you're white. The severe negative impact derived from equity, equality, inclusion, cultural proficiency training, social emotional learning, call it whatever you want, is a school furthering usurping the parent's role as the parent's. The school's role is to be the educators in reading, math, English, history, and science, nothing more and nothing less. Children are to be taught how to think and not what to think politically, their political views, sex orientations, etc. Please do not create a more divisive and racist school environment that already exists. Please vote no on this equity audit. Thank you very much.
That concludes our public comment section.
Could I just make a comment? I would like to thank every single person that showed up here tonight to voice your opinion. That is exactly what we are supposed to be doing. It was a very respectful discourse. Everybody has different opinions on this, but I so respect you for coming out and for staying here for the duration of the public comment section. I hope to see more of you at the meetings. Remember, we do have a strategic plan, and we have all of your names. So with that in mind, you can expect a postcard in the mail, but I would, I would encourage, I would encourage all of you to take this opportunity to engage your district. You are the most energized group in town. You gutted it out, you stayed here through the end. The strategic plan, we're gonna need people, we need people to, to, to have interest in what's gonna happen over the next five to 10 years in our district. So I thank you very much for coming. Honestly, thank you.
Did the microphone work? See? That's why you have to pay the big bucks. Now, will you be able to fix the slide projector?
So the next is, we're gonna discuss the strategic plan update.
So, so if I could, we have in front of you, and I think Kate is, if you could put that up there, at the last school meeting, we had a conversation about the strategic plan and sort of how that meshed in with the equity audit, which is certainly the conversation that is, I was taking place here tonight. So one of the things that I was asked as the superintendent of schools is to reach out to Matt Reed and get some information on how his thoughts and how he feels that would work in with relationship to his strategic plan. I, I know I sent this to school committee members so they can see it. Kate is gonna be putting up there publicly so everyone can see as well, too. I know, Mr. Kennedy, you had a conversation, so you were back to read as well, but I just, if you have a chance, just to look it over, if anyone has any questions about, with his thoughts and input on bringing, having a strategic plan done, which is imperative in our school district, and the alignment or how an equity audit would, would fit into doing a strategic plan.
John, we call attention to the third paragraph in that, because the, the question that we had for him was, should, if the district were to do an equity audit, should the equity audit be done as a separate, parallel process, or should it be done as an integrative process embedded into the strategic plan? So I would draw people's attention to the third paragraph where it says, "To be clear, an equity audit should not be a parallel process, but should ideal, ideally emerge as an element of a completed strategic plan to ensure that recommendations from an equity audit would be integrated in meaningful ways across other district priorities. If completed in this manner, it will lend coherence to all improvement efforts undertaken in the next few years." He does go on to say that, "It is in the best interest of the district to construct a strategic plan. They may also begin preparation for an equity audit during this coming school year by researching best practices, finding reliable consultants, and providing the resources that will be needed." So I do appreciate you reaching out to Matt.
So I, I did have more questions, and so I asked Lieutenant Gann to give me the contact information instead. Matt called me directly, and we talked for about an hour today, and I was really trying to get to what's the crux of what this says here. So what he had said to me was, he felt that because our district is small, with a limited amount of people in the administration, that running the strategic plan and an equity audit at the same time would water down both, okay? So we talked more, and the more I talked to him, I found out that he's never been part of an equity audit before, he's never done a strategic plan that had anything to do with an equity audit before. He does not know what really an equity audit is, so we're going to, you know, he's gonna do some research, and we're gonna talk some more. So when I was talking with him, I was trying to find a, you know, okay, so what if we did this, you don't wanna do that, you know, should we do the equity audit before, if we're gonna do an equity audit before? So you have the information that you can use in the strategic plan, and he said, putting off the strategic plan, that would put the strategic plan off for, we don't know how long, maybe six months, another year, and that's something he wasn't really on doing. So then, I came up with the idea, I said, what if we did something that, that we voted on the equity audit to have an equity audit? And then we voted that if we do, to have a placeholder inside the strategic plan, okay, where the results of the equity audit would be addressed at a later date with the team that worked on the strategic plan, where they can go and look at the results of the equity audit and decide any and if steps need to be taken. And he said that, he said that, that sounds like a great idea, you could work that. And then the equity audit can be done after the strategic plan, so it wouldn't be watered down, but yet it still has a placeholder in the strategic plan. I was talking with some people this weekend and who, who were very much against the equity audit, and the thing that they were saying to me was, you know, if you read the equity audit for Long Meadow, which is 106 pages, I read it all, and I didn't find anything about CRT, I didn't find anything. And I didn't find anything about CRT, I didn't find anything really offensive in there. And I actually put it, a link to it up on Facebook and asked people to help me, maybe I didn't see it. And then what people referenced was on the Long Meadow homepage for the, the school district, there was all kinds of stuff on there that, that was very offensive to a lot of people. So the report itself didn't have anything offensive. It's what people, some people here felt that Long Meadows did with that report. So when the people I was talking to this weekend, the strategic plan is gonna be filled with members of the community. Okay, so if there is a placeholder in the strategic plan that they will reconvene once the equity audit's done. So the people from this community can interpret the results of that. All, all the people that you're, you know, you're seeing who are here today. And then have control over what are the next steps, what are the things that we can do in our district as a community. I, I was told by some people that they thought that that would be something that could be worked with. And when I did talk with, with Matt, he did say that he, that he liked that idea. And he said, that's definitely something that they can work with. And he was very positive about it. And because there had been some miscommunications, I reiterated it a total of three times just to make sure that what I was saying and what he was hearing was, was the same. So, and I'm not saying take my word for it, I say we can probably have Matt come back here. But, you know, I, I think this might be the, the solution where the, the people who are worried about critical race theory, I, I want to point out one big thing that happened or didn't happen today. Nobody who spoke for the audit, no one said that they were for critical race theory. No one agreed with critical race theory, no one said, hey, I'm an expert in critical race theory, critical race theory is great, you think it's not great. No one said that, everyone just said, we need the information to see where we stand. And there were some parents here who were, who said that their children who were white or female were being, being, had racism or sexism against them for being white or for being female. And just so you know, that's also what this audit's about. Okay, it's not just about black, white, it's about. Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you when you were speaking. Okay, so, so that's, 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 I'm, I'm trying to find a, a solution that we can move forward with. And that's, that's, that's what we came up with. And that happened right before I sent a couple of emails and then I head back here to this meeting.
Sean, can I, Ben?
Please.
In that third paragraph, it talks about, you should never have a strategic plan with a parallel equity audit. And I think part of that is because of the strategic plan, they're looking for your vision, your core values, mission statement. And I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. An equity audit will inform what some of those things will be. It will inform your vision. If you find that you've got X number of things right, doing them, we want to put that in our vision. If there's X number of things wrong and we need to fix that, we want to make sure that we write policy. And, and that's another big part of the equity audit is to write policy to affect change. So those, that strategic plan is so valuable because it's the umbrella under which the equity audit can, can rest and inform and write policy.
So just a couple of things. Number one is Sean, in your conversation with Matt Reed today, he said that he's never done an equity audit, never seen an equity audit. I, I think it's fair to, to share with, with the committee as well as the members of the community. The reason why is two years ago, if you asked anybody in this room what an equity audit was, they wouldn't be able to tell you. All right, equity audits did not exist two years ago. Now it's the hot button topic and everybody's talking about it. I've said many times before, I have no issues with equity audit. What I have issues with is how the equity audit gets started. Does it occur because of one person or two persons on a committee who decided they want to do it? Or is it organically driven through a strategic planning process done with folks like you in the community who feel that this is important? I wholeheartedly disagree that the strategic plan should be held hostage by an equity audit. I feel the equity audit should be embedded in a strategic plan if it is done. Because if we're doing a strategic plan, we want to look at very specific aspects of our district and how we educate our students. If we do a global strategic plan, then what we're doing is we're basically using a shotgun approach. We don't necessarily need to do that. We can use, we can use the, the equity audit, if, if we choose to do it, as a laser focus to focus on what it is that we want to do. I just have a big problem. And the other thing I have a big problem, honestly, is that we hire a company to do a strategic plan. And these, this is one of the things that they do. So we hire a company to do a strategic plan, we pay them a lot of money. And then the first thing that they do is we tie their hands by saying, oh, and by the way, we're gonna do an equity audit, we're gonna embed it into the plan. We weren't honest with the voters. This committee never had a vote to talk about a strategic vote to do a strategic plan. There had been discussions about it, but I need to make it very clear. All right, we never had a motion, we never entertained a vote. We've talked about the importance of diversity, equity, and inclusion. But I think it's very, very important to understand that the discussions that we've had at the committee level have always been more of a nebulous theoretical discussion and not a hard packed solution. So the, I, I think the overarching, the overarching issue that I see is that if we're going to do a strategic plan, please, let's give the consultants that we've hired the latitude to work it in as they deem appropriate. One of the things that I really do fear is that we're gonna mess it up. We're gonna do something wrong because we're not gonna have a coordinated approach to this. It's important, everybody wants the best education for every kid in their district. But you gotta have one general on the field, not two. That's my own personal opinion, I know there's people that are gonna disagree with me, but I feel very strongly about that. We're gonna do it, let's do it the correct way. You don't want to rush into something just because it's there. One of the speakers said tonight, my discussion moving forward. Yes, moving forward, absolutely. But we move forward knowing where our next step is gonna be. We don't take a step into a dark room without turning on the light.
So through the chair, I'd like to talk to Bill. So Bill, I think it was a little over a year ago, the school committee voted to accept the anti-racist resolution through the MASC. We voted to accept it and I believe part of that was to, to stand up to some of the issues that were happening. But the way to do that, to some degree, is to have an equity audit. In, in my opinion, so what I would say though is, you brought up a good point during that discussion. When we said, okay, so it's one thing to have this resolution come forward, but what are the findings? What, what is it gonna cost? What are the requirements, you know, looking, what will we really basically signing ourselves up for? And though, I mean, I'm not speaking word for word what you said. I don't disagree with you as far as the strategic plan needs to happen as a separate. But I definitely think that if the community is speaking to us and there are people that say we need an equity audit, and the people saying that we don't, that I think if we have the ability as a committee to determine that maybe we need a subcommittee that makes up members of the community and maybe a school committee from each town, that we can have a discussion. Let's open up the discussion to see, let's address the issues. We've heard a lot of parents talk about what their kids are saying in school. We've heard about the issues of bullying. It's not our decision as a school committee, that's Al's purview. But I think it's, it's an overarching thing that we need to address.
Sorry, have we jumped from the strategic plan update to the equity audit?
No, it kind of was together. So.
Can I just, to be back on what you just said? So we did the anti-racist resolutions and that led us into looking at policy and how we can, best serve policy. And looking at, I was, I, I got frustrated because in looking at our goals, our goals were really good, but they weren't measurable. And I thought, well, how do we measure whether or not we, we have, we know we've heard about equity issues, how do we, how do we measure it? And that's when we talked in the curriculum, we have an equity audit. And we looked at a variety of companies that did equity audits. But that was the way to measure, to see, is this a huge problem, is it a little problem, is it no problem? So go ahead, I just wanted to fill that in.
You know, well, I mean, what I'm hearing from both of you is sort of, you know, you know, implied permission, right? So you say we passed the race, the anti-racism resolution from the MASC back in November. Nowhere in the anti-racism resolution does it speak specifically to an equity audit. Your, your question about, you know, the idea of, of equity within a school district, again, there's no mention of an equity audit specifically.
Right, that was just a way to measure our goal.
Right, but what I need to, what I need to clarify is that there's a lot of people in this community who somehow got the idea that the school committee had promised that this was going to be done. And that simply is not true. And we need to address that as a committee to understand, there was never a motion.
Last time it was.
Aside from last week, there was, prior to last week, there was never a motion. And by the way, there were speakers last week who said, we were promised that you would do an equity audit. That's what they said. And you can go back to the tape because there were several that said that.
They were referring to the comments.
So the question that I have is, is that if we didn't do, if we'd never made a motion, if we didn't have a vote, how could a promise have been made?
So, so let me answer that. I had talked to Tracy Melvin because I think Aaron and I were talking, he said a couple of times, do we have a vote? Do we have a vote? And I said, Tracy, Superintendent Gannam has it in his goals. And the school committee, curriculum subcommittee has it in their goals. Do we need to take a vote if those two batches of goals have already been voted on? Absolutely not.
Does our, do our goals specifically reference an equity audit? No, they don't. I'll answer the question, they don't.
Well, I think you're right, I think they're in your goals. I think you mentioned the equity audit in one of your bullets.
Through the chair, do the school committee goals specifically reference an equity audit?
So you have a copy in your, sorry, in your packet because one of the things on the agenda of school committee goals report out. So you do have a copy of your, your school committee goals in there. You don't have my goals in it.
No, I mean, your, your, it was in your rules, one of three bullets.
So I just wanted to get us back, if I could, Fuchia, about strategic plan update. I think that's the agenda that we're speaking about right now. I think what, what we was asked of last week was, how does Mars, how does Matt Reed, who was gonna be overseeing this strategic plan, how does he feel about having an equity audit? I think you got some answers from, from Sean. More importantly, you got the response they gave in here as well too.
I'd say more importantly was the conversation I had with him, where, where he said he just never worked with an equity audit before. He welcomes it, putting a placeholder in that his team can address at a later date, so it doesn't water down the strategic plan.
So can we have, so can we have him back to discuss this with him exactly how it's gonna work? Cause I'm a little, I'm a little hazy on just how the dynamics of that will fit in. Again, my main concern is that the strategic plan is a very important part of this discussion that we're having. I, I don't want to get into a position where we're tying the hands of the folks that are doing the strategic plan. I want to make sure that if we do this, we're doing it correctly. Both for the value of the equity audit as well as the value of the strategic plan.
I welcome that. And through the chair, the number one thing we have to get done as, as a community, as a district, is a strategic plan. When you're looking at these other communities that have an equity audit, they have a strategic plan that's a working document that they're using. So one of the things that is coming off of that is, is looking at inequity. I think the work that we need to do is we need to do a strategic plan. We need to reach out to the community, we've heard a lot of people get tonight, we need to reach out to even more in the community. And that's the purpose of, of a strategic plan. And there's not a question in my mind, as we're hearing from tonight from all these people that spoke tonight, that an equity audit is gonna be probably something that is gonna be even a big pillar of the strategic plan. I'm gonna hear even more people.
I couldn't see it not.
Of course not, because look how much of a hot topic it is, hot topic, but I mean, a current topic that's happening right now. But that's the work of a strategic plan. We're gonna look at all aspects of our district, all aspects of our entire community and say, what are, what are our strengths? What are our weaknesses? Where do we, where do we lay out the foundation for the next? We could call it an umbrella, we can call it a foundation, we need a strategic plan.
And the only other thing that I would add, the only thing I would add to that is that as you put together the folks for the strategic plan, you are going to have folks that are going to be, that are gonna be laser focused on this issue. But I will tell you that very often what happens in committee work is you find that the field is much bigger than what you originally saw through the binoculars. And so as you take out that laser focus and you see the broad breadth of work that needs to be done, that's where we can use those people for that. My fear is, is that, I know the way committee work happens, right? You're not gonna get 500 volunteers to run into this. I mean, this is a great lightning rod. I don't want to lose the momentum on this, we've got a lot of parents who are involved, we just came up a year and a half of remote learning. And I, I would, I mean, not that I'm trying to find the, the silver lining on a really, on a cloud, but yeah, I mean, this is a great thing to engage this many people and to have them in a room and to basically invite you into the process of defining what our district is gonna look like for the next five to 10 years. I think this is a great way to bring people in. I would hate, I would hate to see this done as a parallel process and we would siphon that electricity off to another circuit. And then we would have to, then we'd have to be fighting for people for the strategic plan. That's my biggest fear, like I said, if it fails, we fail. And that's not, I don't want that to happen.
Now, I want to get back to the goals thing. And I mentioned this the last meeting, we have the educational equity policy in our manual that we approved on the second reading on 3421. And it says, the superintendent shall include equity practices in the district's strategic plan and goal strategies to implement this policy. The superintendent, upon request, will provide a report to the committee as a project of the implementation of this policy. So I agree with Bill, it shouldn't be strategic plan over here, equity plan over here, it should be done together. Not in a parallel, that's what that third paragraph of that letter says, don't, don't put it in parallel universe. Should be done together, it should inform the policy, the practices, and the goals and vision.
And I think that's what Bill is actually saying, which makes sense again.
Which is what I was talking to.
I think that's what we're all saying right now. There's not a question that, what we're doing, the work of a strategic plan, that inequity and diversity and, and all of that is gonna be a huge focus of that. It really is, we're seeing it tonight.
I would like to call for the, for the public, because a lot of people here came to find out if we were gonna vote on this and what we were gonna vote.
But we still haven't finished the. Finish Agenda One.
I don't want to lose the trip.
Could you, can you pull up JBB so people can read what it says? I think that's important. Policy in JBB, which was the end that Cheryl just quoted. Thank you.
It's three, it's in folder, it's the 317, I had it up a little while ago.
Can we get, so this is the same thing we asked for three years ago when they came. So looking at DY, looking at Northboro, Southboro, Godwin, looking at what you said, they still don't show the impact the strategic plan had on academic achievement. And so if our number one, North Star is academic achievement, I really struggle with paying consultants that can't tie back a direct return on investment academic achievement. So we asked for it then, it looks like they're trying to give us quotes of what people said. Can we please have some indication of what the strategic plan directly did to academic achievement?
Some data, as we've all been asking for a long time, data, analytical data. When you've.
Respectfully to the chair, whether you have a strategic plan or an equity audit, Mars comes in, works with us, the real work for the data comes after they leave, right? That's the work that we're gonna have to do it, we're done, that's the work we're gonna do as a community.
Yeah, but he's asking to see, so if you're gonna use examples of, that are on here, of Dennis Yama and Northboro, Southboro Public Schools, he wants to see where they started and where they finished, like data points.
And the only thing I'm saying is, the onus is on the district to take on the run. So, and I'm gonna tell you, the MDWobraham is a prime example. We have a 20, a 2000 strategic plan and we haven't looked at it for 20 years. And now all of a sudden, I wouldn't want anyone judging us on the strategic, or them, you know, on the strategic plan work that was done 20 years ago, what we're doing now. The real onus is on the, the district, once they get this strategic plan, once they get an equity audit, what they're gonna do with it. But it's no. But it's no different than our, our school and student plans. We do them, we got to make sure we're following through with them so they're not just at the shop. So yes, I will get some data on that.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, it's more so just because there, and what was provided to us as vision of 2020 is we talk about what they started with in April 2013. We understand that it explains kind of what went along. So where they, we kind of see where they started, but like, where are they now?
Sure. Okay. And, and when you're asking for data and, and through the chair, is it MCAS data? Is it, is it, what, what particular data, just so I can go a little further?
Whatever data that they have to prove their points.
So they have a baseline. And then in theory, if we're going to spend money with a consultant, their work, their money, you got to see an improvement from that baseline. Whatever they're using as that should be the key. I do think there's an important distinction between a strategic plan and an equity audit. So the distinction, you send it up to the district. The strategic plan, in theory, they're coming back and they're saying, here is the strategic plan. An equity audit or any audit is either saying you have, you are doing everything appropriately or you're not. And here are some potential areas you may want to look. And then if you're impatient, the plan will come from the district. I think those are two important distinctions.
And even with this, through the chair, even with the strategic plan, they're, they're going to come back and do a SWOT analysis for all of us, including the school committee. And they're going to, they're going to give us some hard data as well, too. Like what the, what the school committee feels, what, what the data looks like in front of our entire community as well, too. So we'll get some data from that.
Anything else on the strategic plan? We'll just wait for data.
And so we're asking Matt to come back and talk a little bit more about the strategic plan.
If he's going to bring some data.
Yeah, we, do we have a contract with them?
Yes.
Yeah, Lisa was asking if we have a contract with them.
We do. And, and they start, they've already started their work. They're coming next week to work with our administration. They'll be setting up time to set with our school committee. So we're ready, we're moving forward with that. And we've already had a couple of planning meetings with them as well.
So have we done a strategic plan? Thank you. Move on to the equity audit vote.
So before we jump into that, it's been asked a couple of times, and I, where's the why? Why are we doing the equity audit? Why is this equity audit a conversation? So I believe it was four or five years ago, we had a student named Maya who came in front of the school committee. She was of Mexican descent, is of Mexican descent, she's still in the system. She was in the middle school and she had all kinds of things that were happening to her about her being Mexican. And it was really causing her issues. Her mother reached out to me, we talked, she said she wanted to speak in front of the school committee. And she came and she spoke. And if you remember, she was very timid, very quiet, but it was very powerful what she said. Also, how long ago did we have those students? April. We had, was it five students? In April, come. And, and, and some of them are here, right? So, yeah, from the diversity culture club, they were coming and saying, hey, listen, these are the issues that we have. They were very respectful, they were very good, and they each had a separate point that they brought up. And I was profoundly moved by, by both of those instances. So where, where is it? I, I'm not hearing from, from the administration that there's a problem with racism. But then I'm hearing things from people in the community and hearing things from the students that are saying that there is a problem. So that's why I thought, hey, you know what an equity audit is? Let's just pull the covers back, pull the rug back, and let's look and let's see, let's see what's there, you know? And then with that, we can incorporate it into the plan because we want to be better. Every single person here, every single person I talked to said, we want to be better. We want to be the best for the kids. And if there's something, I, I work for a very big company and people have said that certain things that I have said have, have bothered them. And I don't want anything I say or do to, to bother anyone. So I want to be better. I got to be better for my son and for my family. So if that's a why that you need, that, that's the why that motivates.
So the one thing I would, I would, because I mentioned it before, two years ago, nobody knew what an equity audit was. One of the things that I think I heard tonight from a number of different speakers was, who are these people? Like, we have no idea who these people are. We've, there's, there's no track record to follow them. So what would we have done prior, prior to a year and a half ago? If we had issues with what perceived inequities in the school district, what would we have done? Right? So the question thing, so the, well, the question comes up.
Now there's something that we can do.
So we're on the, so we don't, but we don't even know whether or not these processes are successful, right? So you're telling me that we're going to hire this outside company to come in? Show me the data that show that when you hire these companies to come in, that you will actually have a positive effect. And I'm just, listen, I'm just, I'm playing devil's advocate here, okay? There's no data out there to say that if you hired this company and you paid them $50,000, that you are going to see one shred of data that will show an improvement. Now, Patrick's asking for it, what you're asking for, what you're asking for with Mars, why are we not asking that from the equity audit firms?
We don't have an equity firm.
We don't have a firm yet. Because if you remember, if you remember, it got stopped before the end of the school year because the state made a decision, I think, because so many people were saying that they were qualified to do equity audits and other circumstances at that point, that we were going to wait, that we were going to do some checking and do contracts and that it'd be a viable option.
Exactly. Now, show me the longitudinal data on those equity firms.
Well, so I think what we were, when this first came up back in November, the idea was we didn't have a data point to start with. So the only way you can get a data point is if you create an audit, right? So you get, you just get, you get your baseline. So nobody said that Sharon was going to go out or anybody was going to go out and just hire some firm because of how our committee works. We still got to work with the budget and finance up in operations. We have to work with Al and the administration. It's not that the, the vote was going to just go and we were going to go hit the ground running and start something. It was to start to compile what was necessary, look at what we were going to use as metric points, data points, because we need to look at everything. And the only way you do that is if you get people getting, having discussion.
What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, is that there is no history with these companies.
Oh, that's not true. There are. Inside, it's been around for several years.
Mr. Superintendent, do it before. Show me some, all I'm asking for is show me some five-year data, right? The problem is, is you can't see five-year data because two years ago, equity audit firms did not exist. All right? That's all I'm saying. So we can't, what we're looking at is, we're looking at this as being a silver bullet that's going to provide us with some type of, you know, some type of, of meaningful input for our district. It may not, right? So I'm just, I, I'm, and that's one of the reasons why I want to involve everybody in this room and everybody in this community, because if it's going to work, it's not going to work because we hired some firm out of Boston to come in and, and, you know, and shoot around our district. It's going to work because everybody in our district wants it to work. And if it's going to work, I want to make sure that it's done reasonably and it's done seeking the input of everybody.
Yeah, we're not going to hire any firm that sneaks around.
Well, I'm just, I'm saying.
But to your point in previous discussions you've had, where you said that, you know, when you leave your decisions up to the people that are the knowers, like you leave education up to the superintendent and the administration. Anybody who needed dental work, you're not going to just go to some guy at 20, you're going to go with a cert, someone who went to school for dentistry. So you're, we're going to not just pick some guy or some group that just shows up on Facebook. We're going to do our diligence and look into it. But there are some groups that have been doing these for a long time, especially in areas like Boston Public Schools, Framingham, Wellesley. I'm not saying specifically those areas where we're going to look, but I'm just saying that other areas in the state with a higher diversity in their population because they haven't been done longer than two years ago. So I, I'll look and I'll get the data and I'll share that with you.
That, that would be, that would certainly be helpful. I would say that, you know, the, the companies, and I, I would put this out there. So is, is there a certification for people to come out where they are certified educational equity auditors?
Does Mars have a certification? To be able to do strategic plans?
So, so through the chairs, that's the work that Mars does, right? And that's who's associated with regional schools there. That's the work they do with strategic plans. But, but there's no certification for doing regional plans. So, but it doesn't mean that they're qualified. It just means.
My ask taking a vote, it's just to have the ability to gather what's necessary to create the data points, the information, what information we're going to require from someone. So we know. It's been identified as one of the other issues that we've always talked about. I've heard a lot of people tonight say things going on in Wilbraham. I'm from Hampden. Technically, I'm not even from here, I'm from Worcester, Massachusetts. And I grew up around a lot of diversity. So I recognize when people are coming forward and want to have their feelings identified, express what they, their view on it. But there's nothing wrong, I think, in being able to look at all that, those aspects. There's nothing wrong with that. But we need to be open.
I'm not saying there is. I'm saying if we're going to do this.
But Hampden is, Hampden as a community has always not been seen as an equal. We've not always been treated as equal. It's, it's been known through the schools. Kids coming from Hampden going into Wilbraham here at the high school, there are inequities and kids are definitely treated differently. People treat people differently. So now it's, how can we make it so kids don't feel that way? So everybody is treated equally or unfairly. That's all, that's all we're looking to do with it.
And, and that's the other issue, the, the, what is quality and what is equity? So we have in the, in the district that Hampden, you know, the school in Hampden is going to be equitable to the schools in Wilbraham. It's not equal. Equal means that if I have band here, I have to have band there. If I have pottery in Wilbraham, I have to have pottery in Hampden. That is equal. And equity means there's going to be after-school activities based on what the population can handle. They, they, they tried to have a band in, in Hampden. They just didn't have enough kids applied to it. So I think what they did say, join together. But, but still, it's, it's equity and equality are two different things. We can't necessarily have equality because no schools are equal.
That's funny, we've got to get too philosophical, but I, I actually spent a lot of time thinking about this over the last couple of weeks. So I think everybody has seen the little cartoon displaying the difference between equality and equity. You have three children standing outside of a baseball game, watching a baseball game, and they're all three different heights. And they show equality as being each child is standing on a box exactly the same height, which shows equality. And then you have equity, which is the tallest child who can see over the fence, doesn't have a box. And then the two children that are, that are shorter actually have, does everybody know what I'm talking about? You've seen this, right? The question that I have, and I, I don't have an answer to this, and I, I keep on flipping it through in my mind, is that in a perfect world where there are no limits on resources, that makes 100% sense, all right? Somebody wrote a, a letter the other day that I read. She was talking about the difference between equality and equity. Equality is everybody gets shoes, right? And equity is everybody gets a pair of shoes that fits. Having done the budget in this district for five years, six years, I can tell you, the biggest question in my mind is, are we going to be able to have enough shoes, right? So if the resources aren't there, and I think this is one of the things that was brought up in previous meetings, if the resources aren't there, then equity, rather than becoming a tool for helping, can actually become a tool for limitation. And so I've had discussions with several educators about this where, you know, if, if you have a situation where you're underfunded, all right? If you don't have enough lumber to build those boxes for those kids, who gets what? Right? And so from the perspective, and it really does depend on perspective. So if you're looking at equity from the position of that shortest kid, that is great. Like that kid, and that's, that's what we want for our kids. Want to be able to provide that for them, right? But for that tall kid who can see over the fence, he gets nothing. So if you look at equity from his perspective, he's getting screwed. Because under equality, at least he got a box, he was sitting up, he had a higher vantage point from the game. And so these are the conversations that I see happening at the strategic plan level to discuss, where do we go when we talk about equity? Because to me, it's a deeper conversation than just talking about it. And I'm so glad that people that wrote letters to the school committee, I mean, it was, several were written the same way, so I'm sure it was a four lettered, but it was very much of an eye-opener to me when I really started thinking deeply about it and understanding the implications either in a district that is amply funded or in an organization that has limited resources. And so how you look at it is really going to determine what your feelings are on it. And so we need to open up those conversations and then create basically a shared language and a shared ideology of what equity means. And more importantly is, what is success? I saw a lot of people saying, we want students to have success. Everybody wants kids to have success. You said it, you said it. What's our measure? So we're going to walk into, we're going to, what, we want to be able to, we want to be able to have a conversation in our strategic plan to be able to decide, what does successful education look like for our students?
And that's, you said it too.
Oh, absolutely. That is the most important thing, is we need to be able to measure that. If you have an audit, before you have that discussion, they're going to come in, how are they going to measure whether or not there's equity and whether or not kids are achieving educational success if we ourselves haven't provided a yardstick for them to do that? I know this is very deep, you know, esoteric conversation, but I really did spend an awful lot of time, a lot, a lot of time ruminating about it. I guess this, you know, there's, there's a lot of discussions that come in and there's a lot of things that go into the semantics that you discuss on this. So again, you know, what I want is I want the best education for every kid in our district. I just want to make sure that we're doing it fairly.
In your semantics, can we just be reminded of how the question or how the motion was going on this evening, please?
Can you read it?
Sean made a motion last meeting and it was tabled to this meeting.
We have minutes from, I didn't see them in the.
The minutes aren't here. I just want to make sure we've got the exact semantics of what it is.
Um, so I just wanted to quickly just say that I, it, it's my understanding that if we do vote on the equity audit, it doesn't mean that we're going to hire a firm tomorrow. It just means that we are going to take our time and do our due diligence, get all the answers that are being asked and be able to have those conversations to answer all the questions that we all have with the help of an outside firm, with our administration, our educators and all of our stakeholders, which is our community.
What was the motion?
Not necessarily the motions. So we.
It would be the exact.
I believe the motion was to instruct the superintendent to engage in and conduct a equity audit. And I believe it was very broad like that. Did you have that anywhere or?
In rough form?
Well, I have it, but I'm in the Zoom meeting that I'm hosting, and I need to vote in on it even tomorrow.
Well, can I, can I just ask, do you have a copy of the motion? Do you know what the motion is?
I'll put it, I made it through the chair. By my understanding, that once the motion is tabled and muted, it is not returned during that meeting, the discussion is basically defeated. So that motion, unless you choose to repeat it tonight, is no longer relevant.
That is so.
So you have to make new motions to that, others, that's the motion.
If we don't, if we don't, if it's been tabled and it's not brought up and voted on, then it's de facto defeated.
But we did bring it up.
No, we would have to re, we had to take it off the table.
I do believe you can bring it up again. You don't have to vote on it tonight. There is a way you can bring it back. If you don't vote on it tonight, this will always correct. You're a school to me.
We tabled it to this. The verbiage of it was tabled right this evening. So it was, it had a definitive time to.
Okay, I think you're going to have to go to your desk and get the information. So, so through the chair, so why don't we just hold on? I know people here are for the equity audit vote. And Kage wanted to get the minutes to see exactly what the verbiage is. So do we want to just move on to school pretty goals, our school committee schedule?
So just on that topic, a, a couple of thoughts. Right, the question of the why. We heard it, right? So from a, from a concept of round truth, right? Those closest, that piece of ground know the truth. We've heard it from students that have been impacted. We've heard it from teachers in the district who have said, hey, there's an opportunity for us to do things differently. We'd like to understand what that is, where we can focus on it. I think undoubtedly, we have work to do. And in learning, we should be continuous students. And part of that is understanding, what can we do differently? What can we do better? I thought, I think it was Russell that brought it up. There was not a cost associated with. I do think there should be a not to exceed included because it would be completely irresponsible of us to just vote on something without having a set budget for it. All that being said, it's the appropriateness of the school committee having that vote. So you can argue that equity. So you can argue that equity shouldn't be politicized, but it is. And I I think back to the the presidential election in twenty twenty, and a lot of people were critical of uh former military officers, retired generals, article of Boston quote, and one of them, I thought, made a very astute point. And they said that we are intentionally choosing not to make a comment because it will make it harder for every military leader moving forward, if it is viewed through political lens. Military, education, healthcare, all should be apolitical, and we heard it tonight. And so if we as a elected political body voted to say, yes, move forward with the equity audit, it becomes to me more challenging for the administration, more challenging for the teachers that have to implement what comes next. It's almost a scenario of the the fruit of the poisonous tree, right? Where then the byproduct of that audit, and Sean, you said it, right? That the concern of people you spoke to was not the audit itself, referencing a lot of that, but it was that byproduct. So if we as a political body vote for this to happen, then all of that becomes political, as opposed to it being viewed through the eyes and the lens of this is the district administration moving this forward. The other comment that came up tonight, fiscal audits happen all the time, I think when they said it. They do, and we don't vote on it, right? It's not something that we say, go forward and do a fiscal audit.
And we vote on the audit for the budget.
We vote to accept it, we vote to accept it, but we don't vote to say, we direct you to go do a fiscal audit. And so when we look at the various audits that happened through this district, we rarely, and I can't think of one, are the ones that are saying, go forth and do. This is something that I think the Reverend put it best, Alan, I hate to do it, this is on your shoulders, it should be on the shoulders of the administration, and the administration should move it forward, it should not be a politically elected body, that's it.
But I still think we as a school committee have a duty to serve our constituents, and that's through the thing, the three things you're always talking about, Phil, that we govern as school committee, and our policy will drive the procedures that now follow.
A policy is, the policy is the what? The how and the why is administration. So when we, and I I mean, this, this, this does, I mean, this is clearly a veer into administration's lane, all right? There's no question about it, we are usurping the the authority and the responsibility of the administration, because what we are doing is we are telling him the how.
We're telling him to do the audit, we're not telling him how to do the audit.
No, absolutely not, absolutely not. The policy clearly states that we are going to have a district that is inclusive, that is diverse, and that we are going to have equity. That's what the policy says, that is our job. Our job is not to say, and you're going to do this by doing an equity audit. If you read the policy, it's very specific.
So why didn't Al just do the strategic plan?
He, so if you recall that conversation, we said, we don't need to vote on this.
That's what we did.
And
As a formal
At the same challenge, did not think that we should have been voting on that.
That is something As a format, yeah.
Have Al bring this forward and say, I would like your support to do it, and that's a wildly different conversation than us as the motion you said, directing Al to go do. And that's a, that's a very dangerous slope that I don't wanna go across, because it it's this political issue today, it's another political issue tomorrow, it's another political issue the following day. Once we start veering into that lane, and we saw it with the MASC this past summer, where frankly, their resolution crossed into political lanes that had things to do with letting sixteen-year-olds vote that a school committee has no business voting on whatsoever. And we need to make sure that we remain apolitical from education standpoint in this district.
Can I have an amendment to the
We don't have the motion, but go on.
Oh, no, you wait, oh, yeah. Shall I make the motion off of the, make amendment off of the So, no, the amendment would be, what if the school committee were to vote? To uh to instruct the superintendent to suggest an equity audit as part of the strategic plan. Now you have the strategic plan, we've covered the bases, we're not infringing on his turf by ordering an equity audit. We're embedding it into the strategic plan, and we are creating a situation where the school committee has suggested to him that this is something that he should do. I'm pretty sure it's gonna happen, but I think that it's important that we that we strive to maintain our lanes.
What if instead of it being a part of the strategic plan specifically, we as a body vote as an encouragement to him and his um administrators to make that one of their goal, that's a goal that, because it has to be measurable, they they report on all year long, that it can be included in part, it's not gonna be a, this isn't, it's gonna get fixed the first year, but it could be one of the goals that could be a three-year goal that's gonna be looked into, and it and it would be implemented with it.
Yeah, you you could, yeah, you can add as much whipped cream to it, if it's not part of a strategic plan, I'm really not interested in it, in it, in it in even entertaining that, because again, through my eyes, the strategic plan is an overarching plan that encompasses the entire district in which equity diversion and inclusion can be a part of that. Anything that, anything that says that this is an independent process, to me is a non-starter, because now you're hiring a second consultant. So what happens? What happens when your strategic plan and your equity audit and the recommendations don't mesh? What do you do then? Because you have two paid consultants basically telling you, you could have them telling you diametrically opposed things. So how then do you make that decision? How then do you you move forward from that? So that's, I I I'm just trying to prevent what I see, what I see to be
The recommendations are just that, they're recommendations, so if they make recommendations in the audit, then 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 that's a recommendation. And then we decide under the strategic plan, which ones fit our district, which ones that uh the 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 team feels will will work in our uh in our communities.
But you, but you're setting up a situation in which, now the MASC let me finish, let me finish. So the, so the Mars is coming out with recommendations as well for the strategic plan, right? What if the recommendations are diametrically opposed? How do you reconcile that moving forward without making one group or another group feel alienated?
How do they come out with something, like they said they have no experience with? You just said, they just said they didn't have experience with it.
What are you talking about? I'm saying, if you, if you, if you if you do an equity audit as a separate entity, you hire a separate consultant.
Yeah, no, you just said if Mars did an equity audit, and then you won't
Mars did a strategic, I'm sorry, if Mars did their if they do their strategic plan and an equity audit, and you have two paid consultants basically coming to you with diametrically opposed recommendations. How do you reconcile that moving forward?
So what what he had said to me was that he said that we would put a placeholder in that, and then when we got the the audit to see, you know, what was the, what was the results of the audit, what did they see? And then they can work on that and then fill that up later. So that he was all in favor of that when I talked with him and sponsored this. So so I just, I just gotta make, and I know, Mar, you're asking about the equity audit and putting in those goals. I I just hope people appreciate the the amount of work going into developing a strategic plan. It's not like we're, we're adding on to a plan we already have, we're creating one from the very beginning. So the amount of the focus groups that we're gonna need people involved with, the commitment they're gonna need to be about, it's gonna take, as that timeline I showed, most of the year to get this off the ground and get where we want it to be. Uh I I again, I can't, this is the goal, I I need a strategic plan as a district, so we know where we're gonna go. There's not a question in my mind, from the response we have today, and I'm repeating myself, that there'll be some piece of this strategic plan that will say, we need to talk about equity diversity, because we'd be lying to ourselves here as a board. We'd be lying to myself as a superintendent and say, everybody's equal, it has equity in this district, and everything, everyone's good, everyone's getting everything they need. There's there's not, we've heard stories that we know in ourselves. So it's gonna be part of our strategic plan, it's definitely gonna be in our, I'm concerned a little bit, Cheryl, and and I don't mean to So I said, this will be certainly something we'll do, and I think the conversation last week was, or two weeks ago was, I don't wanna put it on the back burner. I want, I want you to stop working on this right now, and that's what my concern is, because I do wanna do a good job in our strategic plan and get it done. I just don't know the timeline of getting an equity audit, to your point, Mar, we gotta get companies in here to talk to them about, see who's available. Not even that many that are out there, and every sudden, all of a sudden now, everyone wants an equity audit. So whenever I was down with the superintendents last week, everyone's doing an equity audit, right? You see, you see Long Meadows, you see East Long Meadows, all these companies coming in, and they're getting limited amount of time that they're even gonna be able to come into our district. So I just want us to appreciate the timeline and amount of work going into
So I think the bigger question then is, I thought this, why was, why was then Tom Mazza working on looking at equity firms within, on the curriculum subcommittee if there was no request for that to have been done?
Yeah, we've, we've been doing this for a long time, in fact, you and Gina and I interviewed a potential equity audit firm.
I'm just talking about the timeline, so to say that we're gonna be able to start this, I I think it's gonna take some time. After the 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 strategic plan's done, then we can do the equity audit, but he's gonna leave a placeholder in the strategic plan, reconvene with the information that we get from that.
I I would take, I would make a vote, I would make a motion, I would retable this, bring Macree back, and let's have a discussion with the man who is responsible for doing the strategic plan, and let's nail this down, because we've got a lot of he said, she said on this.
Move to postpone, so according to Robert
I think she's got a
Uh to encourage the superintendent to go forth with an equity audit for information gathering to see where we stand in our community among our population with regards to equity of our population. Not the best word. So who said that quote, was that you?
Yeah, Mr. Simmerall, my high school English teacher is rolling around in his favor.
And he's still alive. Can you read it again, please?
Yeah, uh to encourage the superintendent to go forth with an equity audit for information gathering to see, to see where we stand in our community among our population with regards to equity of our population. Can you read it one more time? I just wanna hear you say it three times appropriately. Do you have any English teachers?
Okay. That's directing the superintendent.
For information gathering, so it's not necessarily saying that there's gonna be money spent, there's, I mean, from that, you would get metrics, you would get, or metrics requirements, what we would need to formulate the type of entity we would want to commit any attention to an audit, maybe not tomorrow, maybe not next week, maybe later in the year. Maybe with the guidance and you, you know, and partnership of Mars with the strategic plan at that point.
And he seemed doubtful. So this, this whole market needs to be done, so I I look at East Long Meadows, I look at Long Meadows, they use this center for leadership and educational equity um out of Providence Road, both districts used that company. Um similar in terms of what their reports came out with, but that's not even a company that we even even heard about, that I'm aware of. So it'll be good to reach out and to see what other people are available, and maybe we have them to our school committee and say, talk to us about what an equity audit, talk about the work that you're gonna do for our district. Honestly, we're hiring, right?
So you know that there are
Can I respond to that, because I I did look into those, having spent a lot of time with Mass Insight and Tom. And then I did look into Clee, Clee is different than Mass Insight, Mass Insight sends a team, and they go in and they look at our data and they look at uh systems and policies, and they're really into data systems and policy. And what's this, what would be systemic problems? Clee does it by amassing like a twenty-five um people on a committee, and they kinda hand it over to that community to run their focus groups and uh, you know, all of that. Mass Insight does need some of that, but not as much. You guys from Boston, I think we just forgot him.
But So I would, I would implore you to look beyond Western Mass, right? Not just East Long Meadow, I mean, we could look at other regional school districts similar in our size, other regional school districts where it's more than one community, and see potentially what they had done, what they are doing. I'm not saying expecting you to have this for the next meeting, but we have to look outside of our little box of Western Mass.
Couldn't agree with you more, let me check, and and we're just starting to see these unraveling, right? We're starting to see equity audits, finally, the the results coming back in, and what the final product is, so it's just starting to happen. Again, last week, every superintendent is like, we're we're doing an equity audit, so let's see what some of the things are. And respectfully, I think someone said, if you look a lot at East Long Meadows and Long Meadows from from Clee, very, very similar in terms of format and setup as well too, so we wanna make sure we're getting the right people in here to work on our district as well.
But I think, uh, because I've been looking at strategic plans, and I think the same thing happens with strategic plans. Uh particularly Mars has a way of hiding their strategic plans, so that you go to different districts, they're pretty similar.
Should I make a amendment there, and it would just to support the superintendent's efforts to gather information on equity audits?
I'll second that.
Through one, then the other.
So you're voting, you're voting basically, oh, you're voting for
So we're not gonna say, do an equity audit, we're gonna say, want him to look at equity audit.
That's effectively what yours says, encourage the super to go forth with the equity equity audit for information gathering to see where we stand in our community among our population with regards to equity of our population. So it's, it's, it's saying something very similar, but it is clear, it's not saying directing or encouraging, it's supporting his research efforts if
So can you, can you say how you would uh, what your amendment is again, what's the language?
Support the superintendent's efforts to go to gather information on equity, on an equity audit.
Gather information on efforts, audits.
On an equity audit.
Al, time. You're gonna be, because we're gonna be starting ramping up the strategic plan. Are you and your administrative team gonna have time to make meaningful progress on this?
I I just want you, in full honesty, the strategic plan is a huge amount of work. And I certainly, it's it's the work we wanna do, and certainly the work that my principals and teachers and community and my uh team is certainly wanna do. What my suggestion is, if I'm reading Patrick the way he he read it and the way he said, certainly, we'll start looking at some companies that are available out there, have them come in and present to us and talk to us as a school committee and say, what do you have to offer us, what does an equity audit look like, what are some of the things you wanna do? If if, I think that's the way we should approach this.
But I think to some degree, Al, we don't want you to just find an agency and have them come and sit in front of us. We want you guys to do, we're supporting you, and it is, someone you think is a good fit, you bring them before us, and we'll we'll be able to kinda see what they're about, that's the way I understand that a little bit.
Yeah.
Because you can have every agency coming in, every school committee we have.
So, but I'm also thinking, I'm also thinking, what if you what I'm also thinking is, is that, wouldn't it be nice if we had thirty set of eyes these of the the strategic plan involved in that process? So rather than, rather than this coming from, you know, school committee down, it's coming from community up.
There's nothing that would include that in the strategic plan, it's simply supporting the superintendent's efforts, that's it.
Correct, I agree.
I I just, one last thing, I'm sorry, Trichet, I just don't want people to think like, next month, where are we with the equity audit, Al, where where are we?
Well, that's what I see, that's what I see.
And the motion that I made, there was no timetable, and I did say with Mars, Mars said that that they would be interested, once they are done, for then the resources can be put into the equity audit, and then it can be put back into the strategic plan, and that sounds to me like the plan I wanted to have moving forward. I I appreciate the um the amendment, but I I stand by my though repetitious incredibly well-written. My original motion, I I think we wanna say that we're gonna do an equity audit, what you, what you do there says that Al just has to bring people in front of us, it doesn't say anything about us performing this.
I think, I think the community should be involved in it, I I really
And it will, there will be, when it's entered, when the results, when the results that we get from the equity audit are being brought forth into the strategic plan, and then the, what they pull from that audit and what they decide is is uh funneled through the strategic plan on actions.
Could be a great forum.
And so what happens, so let me ask you this, so you're saying you do the equity audit separate from the strategic plan?
After the, after the, the, the strategic plan will be done by the end of the school year, so it'll be done in June of twenty twenty-two. And then we could, we got, we have this time to find out who we're gonna use and figure out how we're gonna pay for it and figure all that out. And then, and then we can have them do it starting in June or July, whatever, or whenever they need to do it, and then when that's done, then we get the the report from there, we give it back to Mars and Mass, Mars says, no problem, we are ongoing with you over the next five years. And we will integrate that, reconvene the team, and then integrate it into the
The strategic plan, when I, at that point, identified, some of what you said could come forward,
Yeah.
which could create some of those metrics that would help them better student to figure out, but that's Which could create some of those metrics that would help them better student to figure out, but that's.
Get the, get the interesting time. I think we should call the question. I would just, I would ask that for the next meeting, if we could arrange to have Mac back online. And I, I'm, 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 I'm sorry, maybe I'm just being a toothpick. It's late. I'm just really fuzzy on how all of this sort of integrates together and works and works well.
So I just wanted to read three or four times already that we'll have Mac back next time.
So I called the question on the, on the, this is the amendment first.
This is the amendment first. Let me see the amendment one more time, Sean.
Support the superintendent's efforts to gather information on an equity audit.
And that was seconded.
I seconded it. Yep.
By the order, Bill?
Yes.
Cheryl?
I'm confused. Do we do?
And the original one?
No. Okay, now we go to the original motion. Wait, wait, sorry.
I was like looking right at you. I'm sorry.
Patrick, what was yours?
So then the original motion.
Did Patrick say, sorry? Did I say yes?
Yes. The original motion that was tabled at the last meeting was to encourage the super superintendent to go forth with the equity audit for information gathering to see where we stand in our community among our population with regards to equity of our population.
But it has been changed to the new text.
Correct. So you would, you would, you would turn this motion down, basically.
So a no vote would be?
A no vote would be?
A no vote would support the new, would support the amendment.
So I'm interested.
So if you vote no on this amendment, if you vote no on my motion, it means you're voting yes on the amendment. If you vote yes on my motion. I'm sorry, it's a little late. What, what did I just say?
So you could vote yes on this.
Yeah.
And it would, it would carry it. So this, so when your original one is greater than the language that, that was just approved.
The language approved is greater than the original.
No, they, right, no, it's the verse. So the, the language of the amendment supersedes the original motion. You would have to, if you did, if, if you voted yes on both, then you have an ambiguous vote. Now you're basically voting for two things, which are very different.
No, so for Sean, he would, so sorry, when you voted no, he would vote yes.
Yes, correct.
So.
Yes.
No, I think the motion passed. The amendment passed, so my motion is therefore dead. So the, the motion passed, the amendment passed, so we don't have to vote on the original motion because the amendment passed. Yes, yes. Because right now, right now, my, 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 my little motion is moot because the language has been changed and it's been voted on the change. So it is, the, the original. No, I don't believe we need to vote.
We need to vote the original motion. I'm all short.
The amended motion. No, we're voting on the amended motion that, so we just approved the amendment. Now the motion that I made has been amended and now we are voting on that amendment. So the first thing that we just voted on was we voted on the amendment. We decided to change the words. Now we're voting on the new motion as, as been changed words, right? So the first vote was to change the words. The second vote was to accept the amendment.
So before I cast my vote, I asked a direct question.
Yeah.
And I said, will that have any varying on the original motion? He said, no. So.
I said, no?
Yeah.
I don't remember answering the question. I'm sorry.
So anyway, I, I would vote no. Change the original.
I bet we would change the outcome because it would just been two of those and five eight. You can change, you can put Cheryl down as a, as an. So now we're voting on the amendment to accept the amendment as Bill, I mean, as Patrick has changed.
So this is a vote for Sean's original motion, which is no.
No, this is, this is a vote for Patrick's amendment to the amended motion.
Yes.
So if you like. He is, he is, he's accepted the motion as amended by Patrick here.
I think this is the amended motion you're voting on.
Yeah.
Two guys voting on it. Make it clear. I think everybody's getting tired.
Yeah.
You amended the motion. It's not a felony amendment. It passed. Now you're voting on the amendment.
Yeah.
To support the superintendent's efforts to gather info on an equity audit.
And that's we voted on, right?
And that's when we voted.
We just voted.
That's, that's what he said. You said, can you just repeat it one more time?
To support the. To support the superintendent's efforts to gather information on an equity audit.
And what I said was to encourage the superintendent to go forth with an equity audit.
For information gathering.
It's very, one says that to do an audit, the other one says to gather information on doing an audit.
Yep. One encourages, one supports.
So what are you voting on?
We're voting on having the superintendent do research on.
No, she's asking, are we voting on what your voting was? Are we voting on? You just said. Sorry, I have water. So you had just, we were trying to understand. So we just voted that Patrick was amending your motion.
Yes.
So you said the motion now is not what you said, it's what he amended to.
The motion has been amended.
I just wanted to check.
Five in favor, two against on amending the motion.
So this is again just voting for the support.
So this is, this is, so we voted to change the amendment and now we're voting to accept the amendment as Patrick has changed.
Correct.
Okay, go home.
Do you repeat it again?
To support the superintendent's efforts to gather information on an equity audit.
Roll call in alphabetical order, Bill?
Yes.
Cheryl?
No.
Sean?
I'm going to want to support the superintendent and I want an audit. So I'm going to say yes. I.
Patrick?
I.
Lisa? I. More?
I.
Michelle, myself, I.
Okay. So the chairs, this is only, you're allowed to do anything in front of you. Literally, like you could literally call for, no, you could call for motions to the chair right now. And all you need is.
Yeah, there's something.
The only thing that Michelle, I would, yeah, I would go through and just ask these guys what they need. So the only thing that we need is, is a calendar. We could just get the calendar done, just so we know what dates. And I actually have a.
We're still in a public meeting?
So respectfully, we're, we're just on this, we, we could just have the conversation.